Mr. Clerk, we are reporting out of closed session. We have three items. First item.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first item of council reporting of the closed session is to receive the report and that confidential direction to staff be confirmed.
So the first item is to to receive the confidential direction. On the first item. Someone like to move that? Counselor Gardner, second or? Counselor Gallup, thank you. Any comments, questions? Court of vote?
Court of vote has been requested for the first item of council reporting of the closed session. Counselor Kim, how do you vote? Counselor Kim votes yes. Counselor Gilland is absent. Counselor Gallup? Counselor Gallup votes yes. Counselor Reese? Counselor Reese votes yes. Counselor Gardner? Counselor Gardner votes yes. Counselor Thompson? Counselor Thompson votes yes. And Mayor Morakis?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, second item.
Second item of council reporting out of closed session is to receive the report that confidential direction to staff be confirmed and that a capital project in the amount of $50,000 be created for an environmental assessment.
Someone like to move that? Seventy-five?
Excuse me, seventy-five thousand.
Someone like to move that? Counselor Gardner, second or? Counselor Reese? Any comments, questions? Court of vote?
Record of vote has been requested for the second item of council reporting of the closed session. Counselor Gallup, how do you vote? Counselor Gallup votes yes. Counselor Gilland is absent. Counselor Reese? Counselor Reese votes yes. Counselor Kim? Counselor Kim votes no. Mayor Morakis?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner? Counselor Gardner votes yes. And Counselor Thompson? Counselor Thompson votes yes. The motion carries.
Thank you. Third item, Mr.?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The third item of council reporting of the closed session is to receive the report and that confidential direction to staff be confirmed.
Mover? Counselor Kim, second or? Counselor Reese? Any comments, questions? Court of vote?
Record of vote has been requested for the third item of council reporting of the closed session. Counselor Kim, how do you vote? Counselor Kim votes yes. Counselor Gallup? Counselor Gallup votes yes. Counselor Reese? Counselor Reese votes yes. Counselor Gardner? Counselor Gardner votes yes. Counselor Gilland was absent. Mayor Morakis?
Yes.
And Counselor Thompson? Counselor Thompson votes yes. Motion carries.
Mr. Clerk, confirm and bylaw. Someone like to move that? Counselor Thompson? Second or? Counselor Kim? All those in favor? Pose that carries. Motion to adjourn. Counselor Reese? Counselor Kim, all those in favor? Pose that carries. Mr. Clerk, time is seven oh three. I'm going to call this committee of the whole to order. Town of Aurora acknowledges that the Anishinaabe lands on which we live and work are the traditional and treaty territory of the Chipewas of Trujina Island, as well as many other nations whose presence here continues to this day. As the closest First Nation community to Aurora, we recognize the special relationship the Chipewas have with the lands and waters of this territory. They are the water protectors and environmental stewards of these lands, and as a municipality, we join them in these responsibilities. We further acknowledge that Aurora is part of the treaty lands of the Mississaugas and Chipewas recognized through Treaty Number Thirteen, as well as the Williams Treaties of nineteen twenty-three. Shared understanding of the rich cultural heritage that has existed for centuries and how our collective past brought us to where we are today will help us walk together into a better future. Counsel, can I get a motion to approve the agenda? Counsel Reese? Counselor Thompson? Comments, questions? Call the vote. All those in favor? Pose that carries. Any declarations of pecuniary interest? Seeing none. Move to community presentations. We have two. First one is five point one, Javid Khan, president and chair, and Melanie Pearson, Chair, Induction Committee regarding the Aurora Sports Hall of Fame Class of 2024 inductees. Javid, Melanie, welcome. Where's yours?
Mayor Morakis, members of council, staff, honored members, ladies and gentlemen, and our viewers on YouTube. I'm honored to return to for another year as the president and chair of the Aurora Sports Hall of Fame, as well as chair of the nominations committee. For those who don't know me, my name is Javid Khan. I have been a dedicated volunteer and a proud Aurora resident for the past twenty years. This evening is an exciting one for our community as we reveal and celebrate the remarkable accomplishments of the exceptional individuals you are about to meet and learn about. Their contributions to the world of sports have left an indelible mark, and they have proudly represented our community on a global stage. Their unwavering commitment, extraordinary talent, and relentless pursuit of excellence have brought pride and glory to our beloved town of Aurora. At this time, I have the pleasure of introducing someone who has been instrumental in this entire process. In her first year as chair of the induction committee, Melanie Pearson has worked tirelessly alongside her dedicated team of volunteers and the members of the selection panel. Together, they have meticulously evaluated this year's nominations, assessing the impact of each candidate's accomplishments, both quantitatively and qualitatively, and made the difficult decisions that have led us to this moment. As Melanie announces each name, let us take a moment to reflect on the extraordinary achievements of these individuals. They have triumph over adversity and exemplified the values of dedication, passion, positive character, and perseverance that lie at the heart of the Aurora Sports Hall of Fame. So without further ado, I invite Melanie Pearson to the podium to reveal the names of our 2024 class of inductees.
Thank you for the introduction, Javid, and thank you so much for your time and having us here tonight. I'll begin with a brief overview of the induction process. Let me figure out my clicker here. There we go. Okay. So the first step is the review stage where nomination packages are submitted to the nominations committee for review prior to the April first deadline. Once those are received, the nominations committee will then submit the nominations packages to the induction committee chair. Those submissions, including any nominations packages from previous years that are still eligible for review, will then be submitted to the anonymous selection panel for scoring. The selection panel will score each submission using the established scoring matrix, and the scores will be tallied from each panelist to create a recommendation to put forward to the induction committee, who will then discuss and put forward the final recommendation to the board. The induction chair presents the four recommended candidates to the Board of Governors. Then they will vote to approve the recommendation. And once approved by the board, the induction committee will notify all the nominees of their respective outcomes for that selection year. Successful candidates are kept top secret, known only to a few until presentation to council, which brings us here tonight. So it is now my pleasure to announce the 2024 class of inductees. Our first inductee is Marcel Geary for the category of athlete in swimming. Marcel is a butterfly specialist who made a significant mark in the world of swimming as part of the four-by-one-hundred-meter medley relay team that won bronze at the Barcelona Olympics. Beyond Olympics, Marcel has won several medals for Canada at the Pan Pacific Championships and the Commonwealth Games, and in nineteen ninety, he cemented his status as one of the premier butterfly swimmers of his time by setting a short course world record in the one hundred beamer butterfly. In recognition of his outstanding contributions to swimming, Marcel was inducted into Swimming Canada's Circle of Excellence, and he is also a member of the Ontario Aquatic Hall of Fame, honors that celebrate his remarkable achievements and impact on the sport. Marcel has been a proud resident of Aurora since nineteen ninety-six, and his longstanding commitment to the community has made him well-known and respected. His contributions to the community are not limited to the pool. Marcel has not only coached his children's sports teams, but he has also dedicated his time to various charitable causes, raising funds for Southlake Hospital, the Children's Miracle Network, and the Canadian Breast Cancer Society, showcasing his commitment to giving back. Through his athletic achievements and community involvement, Marcel has exemplified excellence, dedication, and generosity, making him a cherished member of the Aurora community. So congratulations once again to Marcel. Our next inductee is Milton Hart for the category of athlete in track and field. Milton's journey into the elite world of athletics began in nineteen eighty-nine when he was drafted into the Jamaican bobsled team, recognized for being one of the fastest men in Jamaica. His remarkable speed earned him a spot on the team that competed in the nineteen ninety-two Winter Olympics. But beyond bobsledding, Milton also achieved excellence in track and field, showcasing his versatility and athletic talent. Milton competed at track and field at York University, where he attained numerous achievements, including being named nineteen ninety-six Most Valuable Athlete, earning the title of Ontario University All-Star in three separate years, and securing three CIAU medals. Milton's commitment to service extended beyond athletics. He received his Queen's Commission to Serve in the Canadian Military Reserves, where he held the rank of lieutenant. For the past twenty years, Milton has been a resident of Aurora, in this time serving as vice president of the York Region District School Board and as a part-time professor at Seneca College. Milton's passion for athletics and mentorship continued as he became coach in the Aurora community, co-founding Basic Speed and Agility, a program that teaches fundamentals of sprinting, helping young athletes develop their skills and achieve their potential. Currently, Milton serves as the chair of the Aurora Black Caucus, where he works diligently to dismantle racism within the community. His efforts in advocating for equality and inclusivity have made Aurora a more welcoming and supporting environment for all. Through his various roles and initiatives, Milton Hart has demonstrated an unwavering commitment to excellence, education, and community service. So once again, congratulations, Milton. Our next inductee is Sandy Townsend for the category of coach in rugby. Sandy has dedicated more than thirty-five years to growing and building the game of rugby. He has established himself as a pillar in the sport both locally, nationally, and internationally. His career includes coaching the Aurora Barbarians rugby eighteen U boys to provincial championships in two thousand and two and again in twenty thirteen, showcasing his exceptional ability to develop young talent and lead teams to success. In twenty fifteen, Sandy solidified his reputation as a top-tier coach by participating in the Ontario Provincial Competition. His role extends beyond technical training. Sandy is a mentor who helps young athletes pursue their goals, maintain focus, and build confidence in themselves and their teammates. A resident of Aurora since nineteen ninety-seven, Sandy has also been a dedicated educator at the Country Day School in King City, where he has also taught rugby since his arrival. His commitment to the sport is evident in his success as both a coach and an athlete with his induction into the Queen's University Rugby Hall of Fame, highlighting his achievements in the field. Sandy's coaching experience spans multiple institutions, including Lower Canada College, Country Day School, Seneca College, Toronto Rugby Union, Ontario Summer Games, and the Aurora Barbarians. He is certified Level Three by Rugby Canada, enabling him to teach other coaches and future promote the sport's development. Many of the athletes Sandy has coached have gone on to compete at the international level, a testament to his ability to nurture and develop top-tier talent. His contributions to rugby are vast, and his influence continues to shape the sport for the future generations. Congratulations again, Sandy. Last but certainly not least, our final twenty twenty-four inductee is Grace Wong for the category of athlete in table tennis. Grace's passion for table tennis began at the age of seven. She has been a resident of Aurora since two thousand and eight, and her dedication to the sport has remained, earning her many national and international titles throughout the course of her career. Grace has competed in singles, doubles, mixed doubles, and team categories, where she has achieved significant accolades in each. Her recent accomplishments highlight her continued excellence in the sport. In twenty twenty-three, Grace won gold medals for Team Canada at the International Table Tennis Federation World Master Championship, showcasing her exceptional skill on the international stage. And she secured victories in the ninety-fourth New Jersey State Championships, and again in twenty twenty-three, Grace emerged victorious in the mixed doubles category at the ITTF World Veteran Championships, further solidifying her reputation as a top-tier athlete. Beyond her personal achievements, Grace has played a pivotal role in promoting table tennis within the community. She co-founded the Canada Panda Cup in the Greater Toronto Area, a tournament recognized at the national level. Her commitment to the sport extends to her volunteer work, where she advocates for women's equality, diversity, and inclusivity in supporting communities. Grace's contributions to table tennis and her efforts to foster a more inclusive sporting environment reflect her deep dedication to both the game and to the community. Congratulations once again to Grace and all of our twenty twenty-four inductees. I'll pass this back over to Javid for some closing remarks.
Well, it's now time to celebrate, ladies and gentlemen, to the inductions of these three remarkable athletes and one outstanding coach who represents a diverse range of sports and backgrounds into the Aurora Sports Hall of Fame. Together, these individuals honor the sportsmanship, perseverance, diversity, inclusivity, and excellence within our community. I invite all members of our community to mark November the seventh, twenty twenty-four on your calendars and join us as we host our eleventh annual induction celebration evening to be held at the new Aurora Town Square. Please follow us on social media for further information about the event and how to purchase tickets. Congratulations and a warm welcome to the twenty twenty-four class of inductees. Your remarkable achievements have earned you a well-deserved place among the legends of our town's sport history and culture. At this moment, Mr. Mayor, if I may ask, if we can have the four inductees come to the middle here to take a photo with you and possibly counsel?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Counsel.
Thank you.
Oh. Uh, uh, oh, oh, oh. Melanie, Javid, don't leave yet. I still need you guys. Unless there's no questions or comments. Can I get a motion to receive the presentation? Counselor Kim, second. Counselor Gardner? Are there any questions to the presentation? Counselor Reese?
It's an honor to be recognized by your peers, so I want to thank them for the work that they've done here in the past and in the future. Good luck on the induction ceremony.
Thank you. Any other? David, Melanie, everyone here, thank you for coming. To Marcel, Milton, Sandy, and Grace. Congratulations. You're about to be part of a group of extraordinary athletes, coaches, builders in our community that have been recognized, and I can't think of four more well-deserving people to be recognized. And the thing that really captured, I think, the essence of what we do here in the town of Aurora and what makes our town so special is not only what they've achieved in their lives through sports, but what they give back to the community, every single one of them. And what Melanie presented spoke to what they continue to give back to make our community a better place. So I, not only do I want to thank them and congratulate them for everything that they do, but I want to thank them for everything that they do for our community. So thank you. Congratulations, and I'm looking forward to November seventh for that great induction ceremony at our new town square. Thank you, Javid. Call the vote? All those in favor? Pose that carries. Five point two. Melanie Osmond, Southlake Foundation, Regarding Nature's Emporium Run for Southlake Mayor's Challenge Trophy Presentation. Melanie, welcome.
Hope I'm the last Melanie you're hearing from tonight. Uh, thank you, Mayor and Council. I am pleased to be here alongside Patricia, the Director of Events and Community Partnerships, and Brian, a proud Aurora resident and our chair of the run committee, to once again congratulate you for being the top fundraising team for the Nature's Emporium Run for Southlake for our mayor's challenge, raising over twenty-five thousand dollars for, as a team. So congratulations. I would especially like, yeah. I would especially like to recognize Mayor Morakis and Counselor Kim for being two of our top ten fundraisers within the event. So congratulations to you both for individually raising some great funds. The event, as a group, had over thirteen hundred participants, and we had four hundred and fifty thousand dollars raised, which will help support the urgent needs of Southlake. So we would love to have council gather for a photo with trophy for our sixth year. And, um, yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you. Counsel, another photo. Right. Thank you. Counsel, okay, I motion to receive the presentation. Counsel Reese, Counsel Gardner, any comments, questions?
Seeing none. Annie, thank you very much for coming. Obviously, it's our hospital, as I mentioned, and actually, yesterday, I got a really unique trick shot in support of the hospital, but we do whatever we can to make sure that we support our hospital, and I think it's clearly evident by us six years straight, our community definitely wants to raise funds and make sure that our hospital has the necessary equipment to make sure that our residents are well taken care of. So thank you very much, and we're looking forward to possibly number seven next year.
Call the vote? All those in favor? Pose that carries. Move to delegations. Counsel, we have two. First one, six point one, Jeffrey Daw, co-president of Aurora Historical Society, regarding item nine point two. Jeffrey Daw, welcome back, former mayor. We got two former mayors and we got a whole bunch of former counselors as well in the audience today, so.
We're taking over.
You almost had quorum out in the, out in the audience.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of committee. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. Thank you for the introduction. I'm the co-president of the Aurora Historical Society, and I'm delegating as supportive director McDougal's report, CMS twenty-four dash zero twenty-one. Aurora Historical Society, Hillary House considerations, and I'm supported this evening in the delegation by Dan McGowan and John Green from our board, our curator manager Kathleen, our administrative assistant Julie, AHS members, including former mayor Tim Jones, as you said, David Hurd, and some others. So we thank them for coming out as well. To refresh, Hillary House is an asset of the Aurora Historical Society and has been maintained by the society since its acquisition in nineteen eighty-one. However, the challenges of maintaining. Thanks, Linda. I'm not as good at multitasking as I used to be. The challenges of maintaining the building have been increasing as it ages and is exacerbated by increasing difficulties in raising necessary funds. Our financial position, which has been reported to council over the last number of years, and the recent Financial Advisory Committee is well-known to council. Last fall, with the gracious assistance of the town, we commissioned an enhanced condition assessment report, which has outlined a repair upgrade schedule for Hillary House of approximately one point two million dollars. Based on this information, the society hosted a special members meeting this past February, outlining those challenges in our financial outlook. The outcome of that meeting was a motion that was put forward by Tim Jones and seconded by Bob McRoberts. And I quote, "That the membership of the Aurora Historical Society authorized the board of directors to enter into discussions with the town of Aurora to explore options with respect to ensuring the long-term sustainability of Hillary House and to report back to the membership." The motion was passed unanimously. And therefore, we're here tonight to support Ms. McDougal's report. And I don't really have a whole lot else to say. The report is, as I understand it, simply Ms. McDougal looking to get council's endorsement to engage in conversations with Hillary House and then to seek public input on how we may forward, hey, move forward and maintain that gem of Aurora that we do call Hillary House. So thank you very much for your time. I do appreciate it, and I would certainly welcome any questions.
Thank you. Counsel, can I get a motion to receive and ref? Counsel, can I get a motion to receive and refer to 9.2? Counsel Thompson, second Counsel Gardner. Questions to delegate? Counsel Reese?
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank the Aurora Historical Society for doing the work that they've been doing since 1981 to prop up this important heritage asset that we have in the town. So I want to thank the AHS for that, and I look forward to having a discussion about the report today. Thank you.
Thank you, any other comments, questions? Counsel Gardner?
Thank you, I echo Counsel Reese's comments. I think people have worked so hard over so many years to make sure that Hillary House was the best it could be. But I do know that it's old, like some of us. And you know, it needs loving care. And it's just, I think, I know from the financial reports over the years that it's hard to raise enough money to do that. So thank you for coming forward and at least initiating the idea.
We might be able to tap into the foundations of money, but I haven't been able to figure that out yet.
Follow up, Mr. Mayor. I tried to get the Koffler Foundation to get more involved, but I think they only gave $15,000 or $25,000. I understand that, but it won't do the job.
Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, thank you for coming this evening. I mean, I'll just echo Counselor's comments that, you know, we appreciate the respect to everything that AHS has done for Hillary House and for the community in protecting and preserving our heritage. And so we thank you guys all, and we're, I think we're all eagerly looking forward to seeing where this unfolds and how we can ensure that the Hillary House is something that our town and future generations can look forward to seeing for another 150 years.
Of our group are saying, I have another appointment, so I will be leaving. But I do appreciate your time and I appreciate your consideration very much, thank you.
Thank you. Call the vote. All those in favor. Pose that carries. Next delegation, 6.2, Allison Hughes, resident regarding item 13.1. This one's the Town Park Accessible Playground Update and Funding Increase. Welcome, House. Laura Jurs.
Thank you very much. Hello, Mayor Morakas, Counsel and staff. Thank you for the opportunity to delegate tonight. Tonight, I'm here wearing the hat of longtime disabled resident Aurora, of a parent, a neighbor, and a Parks and Rec enthusiast. I want to show support for the suggested amendments and revised budget that will be shared by our Parks Funding Department for Aurora's Town Park. I'm hopeful and excited that this park will be a shining moment in Aurora's mission to be a town for all, with an ongoing commitment specifically for disability inclusion. Before I get into some details, how did we arrive here? I've lived in Ward 3 since the age of three. Tamrat Green is a park. Park is stone-thrown from my house and is a space I have loved forever. It was a meeting place with friends, a place to bring my young niece, and is now a space for my children. The park's inaccessibility, not my disability, has always posed barriers and created safety risks for me to use that space. Growing up, I must say, I'm not sure what consultation was done with local residents. But six or so years ago, when we received notice it was going to be redeveloped, I jumped at the opportunity to give my time, to share feedback, to make requests and act, and advocate for a more inclusive space. At the time, despite emails, face-to-face meetings, and connecting with the accessibility advisor, the project seemed to steamroll ahead. Despite the pause of the pandemic and opportunity to rethink the design, I'm left with a park that leaves me on the sidelines and means much to be desired. I'm taking some notes from Paul Mularby's playground playbook right now. The United Nations 1989 Convention on the Rights of the Child recognizes children's right to play. The United Nations 2006 Convention on the Rights of Persons with Disabilities supports the protection of the rights and dignity of persons with disabilities. Since then, various governments have passed accessibility legislation and standards that prohibit discrimination. It's 2024, and the number of meaningful inclusive playgrounds in municipalities across Ontario is simply not enough. In Aurora, we have none. In the last few years, I've had many conversations here at Counsel with the Parks Team, with our accessibility advisor, and anyone who will listen to me. But in 2024, disabled kids in Aurora, and frankly, all community members and visitors, deserve an exceptionally inclusive place to play. I would giddy when I heard the Town Park was slated for redesign. I need to applaud our Parks Team for exercising patience, listening to feedback, pausing, and making tweaks to their initial design a few times over. I've been relentless in my pursuit to ensure we have the best park in Aurora and perhaps all of York Region. There are many features they will present tonight, but I implore you to approve, along with the budget they come with. While the updating renderings are markedly improved from the initial designs proposed when the team put out a community survey for feedback, I was disheartened when I saw that a swing designed specifically for wheelchair users was left out. I'm hopeful this is still a consideration. Expecting folks to help someone transfer is simply unacceptable and sometimes not possible or safe. It's worth noting there are four known such swings in all of Ontario, none in York Region. What a great opportunity and a pivotal moment to pause and ensure that we make this a priority. I appreciate the small footprint at Town Park, but my personal view is quality and intentionality over quantity of elements. While I care about a swing on a personal level, I'm asking for this on behalf of every child who I see myself in, who deserves this. With this park as a hub for events, for gatherings, and in proximity to our almost complete town square, this is the park to add this feature to. Let's show kids and adults, frankly, who are wheelchair users in Aurora and all of York Region, that they belong and have a right to play. Thank you.
Thank you, House. Counsel, can I get a motion to receive and refer? Counsel Reese, Counsel Gardner, any questions for the delegate? Counsel Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for you. It's not a question, it's a comment. Yeah. Why not? I've tried to get some accessible things in all parks, but it's Town Park. Thank you for coming.
Counsel Reese?
Yes, Allison, I'll say the same thing. I want to thank you for your unwavering commitment to accessibility in the community. I also want to tell you that I'm very buoyed by what I'm seeing with parks and working with them. I want to thank Ms. Teen Camp for the work that she's done. I see Mr. Hartman here from Town Park Area Ratepayers Association, who worked to get a group of people together to start talking about the value of Town Park and the need that we have for making that shining jewel that you're talking about. And I hope it becomes a standard of practice for us here in the community. So I want to thank you for continually bringing it to our attention and reminding us. Thanks very much.
Thank you, any other comments, questions? Seeing none. Allison, thank you very much for coming. I think we're all excited to see the changes, and not just in Town Park, but I think moving forward in all our parks. And thank you for advocating as much as you do in making our town a better place.
I'll be at the ribbon.
Counsel, call the vote. All those in favor. Pose that carries. We have nothing on the consent agenda. Advisory Committee Meeting Minutes. Can I get someone to move receipt of those? Counsel Thompson, Counsel Kim, any comments, questions on the advisor committee minutes? Seeing none. How long has it been? You could always pull it at Counsel.
Act, sorry, with respect to, I'm on page three, it's matters for consideration. 7.1. Point two of the motion that the Finance Advisory Committee comments regarding water and wastewater rate study be received and refers to staff for consideration and future action is appropriate. Is that going to be coming back to Counsel?
I see a nodding yes by Ms. Wayne Riving.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Call the vote. All those in favor. Pose that carries. Would anyone like any items pulled from our agenda today? Counsel Kim? 11.1. Counsel Gardner?
I want them all, thanks.
You want them all pulled? Okay, move forward, 9.1. Just because we have a presentation, otherwise I would have brought that out on the board. So this one is the Sport Plan Update, number five. We have a presentation to be provided by Haley Jones, sport and community development specialist. Haley, welcome.
Lovely. All right, so good evening, Mayor and Counsel. It's my pleasure to be here this evening to give you an update on the sport plan. So this is number five. My name is Haley, and I'm the sport and community development specialist here with the town. And my purpose of my time with you today is to highlight some initiatives as well as some upcoming deliverables through the alignment with the sport plan. Thank you. Okay, so we had to prioritize what we were going to chat about in over the next five minutes. And so I chose to focus on the Recreation and Healthy Active Living Leadership Course, the Women in Sport Weekend, the partnership that we have founded with Ontario Women's Lacrosse, some diversity, equity, and inclusion workshops, and some upcoming sport plan initiatives. So kicking it off strong with the Recreation and Healthy Active Living Leadership Course. It's in its second year, and this year not only was it full, we also had a waiting list. Last year, if you remember, we only had eight young women in the course. We've partnered again with Ask Online Canada. And so Ask Online Canada oversees all the curriculum aspects to make sure that we are compliant with the Ministry of Education. And then the town oversees all of the in-person facilitation, all administration, and all operations as it relates to the course. The young women that are in the course also receive a grade 12 credit for taking it, and it's a hybrid approach. Breaking down some numbers that I thought that you would like to hear about is, from a sports perspective, we always see on Mondays, you know, by the numbers. So wanting to break it down for you to let you know, 15 weeks, we have 16 young women in the course. They received 83 certifications throughout the course. They put in 124 hours of course time, and they give back to the community 192 hours of volunteer time directly into Aurora. As you're all aware, we were all here last week. So on June 4th, the Leadership Course delegated to Counsel, and the students volunteered, then they voted, and they all wrote their own speeches for the delegation. Hearing from parents and guardians and the change that they've seen in their daughters is an example of the impact of this course. Over 60 people came out. I know you're all aware of that, but this is just another example of what we're able to do in our community. So building on that, we hosted the first-ever Women in Sport Weekend. So between October to February, the town hosted nine national coaching certification programs, which is NCCP for everybody else in the room, in partnership with Coach Association of Ontario and Coach Association of Canada. Seven of those sessions, of those courses, were open to any community member to be able to come. They were moderately attended. We hosted a women's-only weekend in February, and not only was this weekend the only weekend that was full, we had to establish a waitlist. Because we had a partnership with Coach Association of Ontario, we went back to them and asked for permission to include additional participants, given our overwhelming response, and they approved. So on Saturday, we had, or sorry, 26 women earned their coaching certifications, and on Sunday, 29. The approach that makes this different and looking at it from a true equitable lens was our ability to really remove those barriers. So not only was the course free, we were able to receive grant money and also form that partnership. The other part is that we were able to offer childcare for free for all the women who came, and that was a service that was taken upon. So by creating this space, women were able to come together, learn, and connect. The next part of this is we took it again one step further, and we actually hosted a Women in Sport luncheon. So we called it the Wins Luncheon, the inaugural Wins Luncheon. To name a few of the special guests, we had Town of Aurora staff, Sport Equity Inclusion Committee members, sponsors, partners, media, Ask Online Canada, Leadership Course alumni from last year. We had a couple of the young women come back, numerous local sporting organization coaches and board members. And this weekend was full of hope. We heard from many of the women in attendance that they were so proud to be part of this amazing weekend. We had 39 women come to the luncheon. The next example that I wanted to show you is the Ontario Women's Lacrosse Partnership. So thus far, we talked about the town's role in creating future female leaders, female coaches, and here's an example about supporting female officials. In this groundbreaking initiative, Ontario Women's Lacrosse partnered with Redbirds Lacrosse, which is our local lacrosse organization, and the town to host a development camp for officials, both current and future officials. We have four young women that are on the brink of making it into the senior rounds and being able to host something like this at home, removed all the transportation barriers for these young women to be able to participate. So this example is how the town can work with provincial organizations to benefit our local sporting organizations. Like to focus a little bit on some DEI workshops. So diversity, equity, inclusion is a top priority. All of the sessions that I'm going to talk about were offered for free to all of our community. Registration was required, and some of it was in person, some of it was virtual. But overall, we received an overwhelming amount of positive feedback. The first example is we partnered with Sport Law and brought in Melissa Knox, who specializes in diversity, equity, inclusion. And we focused on, over the course of three sessions, we focused on a DEI in sport toolkit. So how can organizations set themselves up for success and what to do when? The next part that we hosted was participation, equity, and competition. We brought in Ms. Faye Johnstone, who's a leader in the trans community, but also bringing forward how to support trans athletes, both from supportive roles and active roles in sport. And Faye Johnstone is the Executive Director and co-owner of Wisdom to Action, and very much a leader in her space. Brock McGillis, we brought in just last month to talk about LGBTQ2S+ inclusion in sport. Amazing session that we were able to host here for town staff, as well as in the community. Junior A Tigers were one of the partners in bringing this in. And it was a focus on language and how we can all be responsible for creating a shift. Now, looking at upcoming sport plan initiatives, the town has partnered with See What She Can Do and CICS, so Center of Immigrant and Community Services, as well as received a participaction grant to host the inaugural Lead Her Play Day. This is a focus on girls between the ages of eight and 13, and a full focus on trying new things, getting active, and building confidence along the way. This event, or this plan, sorry, sold out in 23 hours. It wasn't even a full day from when we launched it to when we met all of our maximum numbers. The next one I wanted to share with you is Kendra Fisher. So the town has partnered with You Can Play, as well as Central York Girls Hockey Association, See What She Can Do, and St. Anne School to bring in Kendra Fisher to focus on mental health in sport and strategies for managing mental health without compromising athletic goals and challenging the misconceptions around mental health. The final one that I wanted to bring to your attention today is the inaugural Pride Luau. So this is an interactive pride event scheduled through June 26th in partnership with You Can Play, York Pride, and Participaction. My colleague Franco was here last week talking about June is Recreation and Parks Month as well. So this is also tied into that piece. But this event aims to foster inclusivity, promote diversity, enhance opportunity for healthy active living, and make a positive impact within our community. All of the events that, sorry, the two last events that I just spoke about in terms of Kendra Fisher and the Luau are all free to our community. We wanted to really be able to break down those barriers and make sure that we're having an equitable and inclusive approach to all of those pieces and bringing in some community partners. Thank you for your time today. I know only had five minutes, so I really tried to prioritize what I wanted to share with you all. But it's been amazing working for the town just over a year and really appreciate the trust to be able to establish our sport plan in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Haley. Counsel, can I get a motion to, motion for that report number CMS 24-023 be received for information? Counsel Thompson, second, or Counsel Gardner? Any comments, questions to the presentation or to the report? Counsel Reese?
Haley, thank you very much. I was looking through the report, and what I was really worried about or concerned about was some of the metrics on it. And so I saw you were putting down by the numbers there, and I really think it's important for us. And so I saw you were putting down by the numbers there and I really think it's important for us to be able to get those numbers. So do you, have you set any targets, KPIs for things such as these young women who have gone through programs and then to follow them afterwards to see that they have participated in volunteer activity as a, as a female leader? Have you kept track of those who have gone from just being house league to perhaps being an assistant coach, moving up into, from assistant coach to a, a full coach? Are you, is that on your, on your KPI, something that you're looking for to bring metrics back here?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. That's a great question, Counselor Reese. And I think that we have to look at it from a multifaceted approach. From our end, looking at developing future leaders and looking at developing future coaches, it's all based on self-reporting. So from that point of view, it's not on my list in terms of how we determine that these programs are successful. We've had one young woman at this point from both classes go on to university, just given the age ranges of them all. And then also being able to work through innovative partnerships with, for example, CYGHA. We do know that a lot of the young girls are part of those, like Coaching the Cubs, for example. One of the other pieces that we have been able to follow is through the NCCP coaching, is looking at how many more courses they are taking and are interested in coming back for. The other part that we need to be mindful of is overall looking at equity to be able to, to examine equity through the same lens that we have with high performance sport. The two are not, are not symbiotic with one another. And so being able to really break down what that looks like, things that we look for are a little bit different when we're measuring our KPIs.
Thank you. On page seven, you make a comment here. The sport plan twenty-five, twenty fifteen to twenty twenty no longer adequately reflects the evolving needs of our local sporting organizations. And I think this is referring to the, to the sport plan update that we're having. Can you give me an idea of what, why you think it no longer adequately reflects the needs of our sporting organizations? Because I see a lot of this, the work that you're doing on DEI, and I, I believe it's important to do so. But I'm wondering what the other stuff, because the sport plan is very robust and what things are, you think are top of mind in terms of the sport plan reflecting the sporting needs of our organizations?
Haley.
Through you?
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. In terms of the sport plan update request that came forward for budget approval and where we're at right now throughout that process is actually where we finished the RFP and looking to go back out. Counselor, the, the, one of the biggest changes that we're making is removing DEI as a bucket and actually putting DEI as the overall plan. So all of the priorities will flow through DEI instead of DEI being a separate priority and therefore the other priorities don't touch diversity, equity, inclusion. Going through an entire pandemic, coming out the other side, looking at some of the examples that we saw through the Black Lives Matter movement, looking at the LGBTQ two S plus community, looking at grants and some of the needs of our local sporting organizations. We want to take a different approach to make sure that our website is up to date, to make sure that we're able to help LSOs, local sporting organizations find those pieces. And looking at the town as being part of that connective tissue that brings everything together. And I think that the town has a really unique and special opportunity to be able to provide those to our LSOs. And through some of the feedback and consultation we've had with our local sporting organizations, one thing that reads loud and clear is that they're looking for a different level of support. They don't want the town to tell them how to run their businesses. It's not our jurisdiction to tell them how to run their business. But on the other end, being able to provide those resources so that they can run their businesses as needed. We know with ONCA coming down the, coming down the pipes is that it, it's our responsibility to make sure that we're helping organizations understand some of the changing legislation as well. And that, that those change in legislation was not around when the sport plan was first initiated.
Right.
Counselor.
Thank you. So looking at the local sport organizations, because we're here to, to support local sport organizations, of course. Is there a plan, a target for them to incorporate DEI in a meaningful way with their boards? For instance, to make sure that their boards are diverse, their coaching is diverse, their programs are diverse? Is that on the radar for you and for the town to make sure that we're giving them the things that they need in order to be successful in DEI?
Haley.
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. So I think that that's a great question. And that's where it comes back, in my opinion, back to the jurisdiction conversation. And in order for it to be a meaningful and mindful and intentional approach, it can't be a forced piece. My expertise in diversity, equity, inclusion, being able to have those conversations with our LSOs, it's, it's an extremely important conversation, which is why we've prioritized the DEI workshops. What we've heard from our LSOs is that some of the areas that they're struggling with is around recruitment of a diverse population and things of that nature. And so that's where our approach is coming from. It has been identified when we went out in an RFP for the sport plan update that these are some of the pieces that we need to examine and we want to make sure is not lost in this update.
Counselor.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Thompson.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. You packed a lot in your five minutes. Just if you can sort of comment on, in the report, it speaks of the fact that the towns received some national and provincial recognition for our sport planning initiatives, if you can sort of expand a bit about, on that, as well as if you're seeing other municipalities looking to the Town of Aurora and what we've managed to accomplish and, and trying to either emulate or duplicate some of those efforts as well.
Yes. Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. I've, I've been privileged and blessed to actually be able to be part of several panels, be able to speak with different municipalities. I presented at the Parks and Recreation Ontario Expedition Summit that happened a few months ago. And so I'm, I'm finding that the more conversations I'm having with municipalities, with like-minded individuals, the more that they're wanting to know what we're doing here. And so every opportunity I get, I connect with Lisa Worth and we, we make it happen as much as we can within, within reason, of course. The national, international, or sorry, national and provincial recognition has come from Parks and Recs Ontario, CPRA, so Canadian Parks and Rec Association, as well as True Sport has, has come through and is really starting to value a lot of the work that we're doing. And so between that, sitting on panels and things of that nature, it's an opportunity to brag, to be quite honest, about how proud I am to work for the Town of Aurora and a lot of this work that we're doing. And then the second part of that is also people are coming to us. They want to know how we've created this leadership course. What do our innovation partnerships look like? How were we able to get grants, money to host NCCP workshops, but then also create a Women's Sport Luncheon? And how are we making these things happen? And then how do the young women from the leadership course actually come to those pieces as well? And so really being able to look at it from a strategic standpoint to say, okay, if these are the pieces that we're, we're running, who can we run it in partnership with? Participaction has come back to the table with us and is really interested in some of these, the, the Lead Her Day that we've just launched, as well as the Pride Luau to say, how are we using the grant money? What is it looking like? And then one of the things that I'm always proud to say is that, you know, we make a lot of these pieces happen in our operational budgets. So really being able to dig in and, and make our community proud and make sure that everyone in our community knows that they belong.
Counselor.
Great. It's, you know, it's nice to hear that not only are our own residents and sporting organizations benefiting from all that we're doing, but it's also serving as a bit of a springboard for, for other municipalities to deliver similar results for their residents as well. So that's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Garner.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for coming. Done a lot of work. Under financial implications, it says there are no direct financial implications arising from this report. Are they all, well, some of us are subsidized, but you said it's coming from the operational budget? Could I have staff member comment on that?
Ms. Worth.
You're on.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair. We do have an operating budget that we have developed to support the sport plan work and everything that Haley has talked about today, we've been able to deliver within the operating budget along with the grants that we've been successful in securing.
Counselor.
Thank you. That's good to hear. Is this an operational budget that council voted on sharing budget or how did that happen?
Through you, Mr. Chair. It, it, it was developed through the, the, the regular operating budget process, through the, the regular process, through regular timelines.
Thank you. Could I, through you, Mr. Mayor, could I have a, I, I don't, Ms. Wajal, Ms. Wayne Wright Van Kessel? Could you comment on, like, could you just comment on that?
Ms. Wayne Wright Van Kessel?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So any of the changes that would have happened to the operating budget would have been identified either as base growth or enhancement changes. So it, the budget for this area within the Community Services Department is actually quite small compared to a lot of the other items that we're, are in there. And the team is able to accomplish a lot with very little funds. So it may not be in something that got called out specifically as a separate item, but it is within the community programs overall.
Counselor.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. And, and how much is the budget?
Ms. Worth.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Off the top of my head, I believe the budget for the workshops and, and the things that Haley has talked about is around, I want to say forty thousand dollars. And that does not include the grants and things that we've been able to secure so far this year. Also doesn't include staff salaries, obviously.
Yes. Uh, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none. Haley, thank you very much for coming tonight. I, I, I will say, you know what? Phenomenal job that you and everyone else does. You, you're putting Aurora at the forefront. We're standing out front as leaders and it's because of the work that you and the team does. You know, it's, it's quite clear that you have a passion for sport, but you have a passion for this town and we appreciate that. And I think our residents do too, and as well as all our sports organizations. So thank you very much. Counsel, I'll call the vote. All those in favor, pose that carries. I'm going to go to eight Aurora Historical Society first because they're here. So next we'll do nine point two Aurora Historical Society. Get the recommendation up, sorry. Thank you. Someone want to move the recommendation? Counselor Thompson, second or Counselor Reese, any comments or questions? Counselor Gallow.
Thank you. I think there was, there was two things that the delegate, when, when I had a question about Queens Diamond Jubilee Park, whether or not that is considered an accessible. Oh, I'm sorry. Am I on the wrong one?
Yeah, this is a historical.
My apologies.
Sorry. Did you want to say anything to Historical Society?
No, I, I, I support the.
All right. Counselor Thompson, Historical Society?
I, I do, thank you.
Okay.
I guess through you to Mrs. Worth. Lisa, perhaps you can just sort of expand in terms of the thought around the public consultations on the future of Hillary House that the town and AHS will participate in.
So I do have Ms. McDougall online.
Oh, sorry. I didn't know she was. Perfect.
Ms. McDougall, did you want to answer that?
That's even better.
Certainly. Everybody can hear me, I assume. As far as the consultation goes, obviously, first step is to, in our opinion, is to meet with the board and certainly with the executive of the Historical Society. They've certainly well familiar with the facility. They certainly have a vision for what that facility would be and hope, hope for. Get their information and feedback back and then subsequently ask them their vision of a public consultation session that may be something that is held at the Hillary House. It may be something held within a town facility because we have a little more space to accommodate, inviting the public to it. We also see obviously visiting our heritage advisory committee and just having another view of, from an economic development potentially, as well as getting the feedback from our ECTV group from a business perspective and certainly our cultural partners and looking at what they may be envisioning for that site. And just trying to be as broad as we can to get as much feedback to bring back to council and provide you that feedback, as well as certainly Historical Society will want to have that feedback for themselves.
Counselor.
Great, thank you. You know, I'm certainly supportive of the, the motion itself. And, and you know, I think that an important aspect of it is engaging the various stakeholders and residents and, and having these, these open and honest dialogues and conversations with regards to the long-term viability of Hillary House and, and then making a decision so that we can all move forward.
Thank you. Counsel Reese.
I too am in support of this report. And thanks to Ms. McDougall for explaining a little bit about the public consultation. I really hope that in this consultation, we are going to focus on the value of our heritage in this community because we have a very unique community that has a lot of heritage to it, a very strong history. And I think it's marketable and I hope that's part of one of the questions that we're going to be asking in, in community consultations. So it's really important that we look at heritage and, and value it. I also am very hopeful that we can find a way to continue to do, to work with the Historical Society who's done an awful lot of work for us for a very long time and a committed group of volunteers that have a lot of expertise. So I really hope we can work on something to work with the Aurora Historical Society because they've been great cultural partners over these past number of years. So that's my only comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Garner.
I'm also in support of the report and I echo the comments that were made at, at this table. Thank you for your work over the years.
Thank you. Seeing other comments, questions? Call the vote. All those in favor, pose that carries. Counsel, I'm going to move to fourteen point one because we have a presentation on that one as well. So this one is the twenty twenty-four Energy Conservation and Demand Management Plan. You have a presentation to be provided by Patrick Darby, Energy and Carbon Team Manager, Partner Walter Fady, Inc. Patrick, welcome. Where's yours? Got it for you. There you go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council for having me here today. So my name is Patrick Darby. I'm the Team Manager of Energy and Carbon Solutions of Walter Fady. We've been working with the Town of Aurora for the better part of the past year on the Energy Conservation and Demand Management Plan Update. So this is a, a project which is mandated through the Ontario Regulation twenty-five dash twenty-three, where an update to this plan is required to set actions for the twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-nine timeframe. There is a previous report, report completed for the twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-four timeframe. So the targets established in that previous report was, the, the overarching one was an eighty percent reduction in greenhouse gas emissions for the corporate assets of the Town of Aurora by twenty fifty. And, and also a sixteen percent reduction in greenhouse gas emissions from the two thousand eighteen baseline by twenty twenty-three. As part of consultation with various stakeholder groups at the Town of Aurora, new targets have been established. The short-term target is a twenty percent reduction in greenhouse gas emissions from the twenty eighteen baseline by twenty thirty, a fifty percent reduction by twenty thirty-five and achieving net zero greenhouse gas emissions by twenty fifty. Just restarting the slide deck there, I think. So what we're going to start talking about as the slide deck gets repopulated there is where we're, where we're coming from and what's the emissions profile looks like for the corporate assets of the Town of Aurora. So, so I think the next slide that we're going to speak on is with respect, respect to that distribution. So buildings certainly represent the largest contributor to carbon emissions for the Town of Aurora. Secondarily, Fleet is the second largest contributor. Thank you, Natalie. So I'll start to talk through the slides or the information on the slides. Maybe hold on one second because I think there's some, some nice metrics here that everyone can see if possible. There we go. Thank you very much. So this is a table which, which shows the twenty eighteen baseline, what happened in twenty twenty-two and what reduction has taken place since that time. and what reduction has taken place since that time. So overall, total carbon emissions of the corporate assets of the Town of Aurora were just under four thousand tons in two thousand eighteen. Great effort was made by the Town of Aurora to achieve a fairly significant reduction in carbon down to thirty one hundred total tons. You can see from this table that buildings dominate the overall carbon profile of the corporate assets of the Town of Aurora. Secondarily, by corporate fleet. And then the third largest is waste. You can see there was not a change in the waste numbers because waste is a new component we've added to the report for this coming five years. Because more data has become available and it wasn't reported on previously. So this is a visual representation of that distribution that we saw on the previous slide where you can certainly see that sixty seven percent of of the GHG emissions are from buildings and the remainder are from wastewater, water and wastewater, fleet, lighting and solid waste. So now we'll start to talk about the plan for twenty twenty four to twenty twenty nine. So there's a number of actions which are going to take place over the next five years to start to achieve significant carbon reductions and creating the path towards the original goals that we were talking about, ultimately net zero carbon by twenty fifty. So there's a number of technical items related to buildings which have been uncovered in previous studies that have looked at buildings. So those are along the lines of improving HVAC systems. We mentioned things like demand control ventilation. Implementing measures that will be established from feasibility studies which will take place over the next couple of years. Lighting measures, occupancy sensors, water fixtures, upgrades, building automation system upgrades, pool covers for recreational complexes, boiler replacements and HVAC scheduling, so ensuring that systems are aligned to the schedules of buildings. So those all have contributions to both reduce carbon emissions and also reduce utility costs for the town. There's a number of additional recommendations over these next five years which will align with achieving the twenty thirty five and twenty fifty goals in particular. Those are to complete level three energy audits for each of the facilities in Impello with a net zero pathway feasibility study. There's funding available through FCM which has been a great contributor to achieving the alignment of a true pathway for each of the facilities. In addition to establishing a process through those studies, there's a number of other items which will be completed recommended, including renewals of a roof, staff training and capacity building, building automation system installations and upgrades and in the looking medium and long term, implementing energy conservation measures revealed through the studies that will be completed over the next couple of years. From a fleet perspective, there's going to be a number of replacements to decarbonize the fleet profile. So those will be with respect to vehicles, ice resurfacing equipment and equipment, which could be any kind of small piece of equipment which currently consumes fossil fuel, where maybe an electric version of that is a recommendation. That will both think these these measures under the fleet standpoint will both reduce carbon emissions and utility costs as well. In addition to these these particular components, there's going to be increased renewable fuel content where feasible, continue to implement actions that have been previously established through the Green Fleet Action Plan, completing a full fleet electrification feasibility study so that will look in detail at each and every asset from a fleet perspective and creating a plan to decarbonize them and attracting additional fuel consumptions which occur with the with the components which contribute to fleet. From a waste perspective, it's a little bit softer in terms of approach as data is fairly new. So first it's to perform regular solid waste audits to ensure that data decisions are made from informed basis of data. It's develop a detailed waste reduction plan. Start to incorporate mandatory green bins and recycling collection at all town facilities. And in the long term, targeting in the range of ten percent reduction. And sorry, in the medium term and then ultimately net zero in the long term in the twenty fifty timeframe. Overall, additional recommendations would be continue to monitor energy performance, understand how buildings are operating, train staff on energy efficiency and operations and maintenance which contribute towards lower energy and conservation profiles. Continue the implementation of the green procurement policy, looking into carbon offsets and what that means overall. And also establishing a sustainable building standard for new construction and major renovations. Just quickly here, as I close up on time, the left hand plot, there's a lot of information here, but that's kind of the business as usual projection, which would see an overall net increase in GHG emissions from now through twenty fifty. The plot on the right is an output from a detailed modeling that we've completed, which shows the gradual reduction in carbon through implementation of a number of measures across the portfolio for the Town of Aurora. Certainly, cost is something which is important and needs to be considered. And we've looked at kind of the short term costs and there's costs associated with studies, but also on the capital side as well. And in terms of progress towards the goals, there's a good plans in place here. There's a lot of decarbonization of the facilities which will lead to major reductions as well as the fleet too. So overall, there's a great plan where there's flexibility in the changing landscape of energy and carbon. So if we're going a couple of minutes over, but happy to answer any questions.
That's right. Thank you. Counsel, can I get a motion for the recommendation? Someone want to move the recommendation? Counsel Kim, seconder? Counsel Reese, thank you. Any comments, questions to the presentation or to the report? Counsel Reese.
Yes, thank you. I'm happy we have smart guys like you doing all this work because it's very complicated, but it's very important. So thanks very much for the presentation. I was looking at the financial implications and I just wanted an explanation about that. Because you have on, I think, on your presentation, you make reference to FCM and some of the grants that they have. Yet in the financial implications, you're indicating on the on the details there that the full three million nine etc. Is something that will have to be managed through reserves or through tax levy. So maybe through you to Ms. Wayne Wright and Kessel, how we explain that. I don't know whether the grants are offsetting that three point nine or they're included in the three point nine. If you just give me an idea of what this is actually going to cost us, I'd like to hear how that's happening.
Ms. Wayne, right then, Kessel.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So should the plan be endorsed, then the actions in the plan, we can start putting in grant applications for those, but until we actually secure the grants, we can't bank on them until that point in time. But there will definitely be a concerted effort to make sure we can secure as much funding as we possibly can.
Counsel.
Super. So it's just a subsidization of the of the true costs. You put the true costs in and we're going to go out and look for grants through FCM and other places in order to offset that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Thompson.
Thank you. Just expanding on that. Through you to to either the presenter or Mrs. Wayne Wright Van Kessel. When I look through the grants, the grants seem to be a combination of grants and loans, but primarily loan based. And so it seemed like the smaller, you get some smaller portions, but are we aware of other municipalities that have been successful in pursuit of these grants recently? You know, it's always hard to find municipalities that are exactly similar, but it just gives us a sense of what perhaps we can count on.
Starby.
Great question. So there is a number of examples of municipalities that have secured grants through FCM and through other programs. FCM is a program which is very well known. It's not competitive in nature. So you can put your application through at the time that makes sense for you. Certainly with any restrictions from a political standpoint. But there are many other programs that are competitive and are facilitated through the provincial and federal governments as well. Like the like the Green and Inclusive Community Buildings Program. That's funding which is available for major retrofits of recreational complexes in particular. So the city of Brampton has a major grant that they've received for a retrofit of their Susan Fennel Sportsplex. And those are just, those are just a couple. Also kind of keeping the ear to the ground with the IESO, who is the Independent Electricity System Operator of Ontario. And the Canada Infrastructure Bank. So at the end of the day, there's many opportunities for grant applications. And I know that the group at the town that is looking into these has has a lot of contacts and will regularly be looking into the opportunities.
Counselor.
Thank you. I appreciate the background. You know, in the short term, the biggest cost seems to be associated with the electrification of the fleet, which there is an FCM grant available for that as well. Are you familiar with that one? And if so, can you provide a little bit more background through you, Chair?
Starby.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, certainly. I don't have all of the details off the top of my head on the kind of percentage of capital dollars available for individual equipment, but it is fairly significant. But I can definitely circle back with the with the group here and get you more firm answers.
Counsel.
Thank you. Or if just if you're aware of other municipalities being successful in it, it's always good to know. So thank you.
Counsel Garner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Mr. Darby. Thank you. Thank you for your work on this. Could you tell me what demand control ventilation is?
Starby.
Demand control ventilation.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I certainly can. So that's a control strategy for HVAC, particularly on the ventilation standpoint. So a good example is being in chambers tonight or certainly earlier, there is a significant number of people in here where the carbon dioxide levels will increase quite significantly. So demand control ventilation is an approach where you would increase the amount of ventilation to a space like this, which may have increased energy and carbon impacts. But it's aligned to what the schedule of the space is. So you wouldn't take the same strategy in controlling a space like this when counsel is on like tonight compared to nine AM on a this morning as an example, when no one's here. So demand control ventilation would ramp that down. So you're not not putting undue energy into this space.
Thank you. When you mentioned staff training and capacity building, what do you mean by capacity building?
Starby.
Oh, through you, Mr. Mayor.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Great question. So there's going to be changes in systems and changes in how some systems are are just just changes in the type of systems which are going to be operating in these facilities. So there'll be a lot of education and training required of the staff. And we need to, the idea of capacity building is building teams who were their allies to achieving the major carbon reduction goals associated with the overall approach because it will will create a lot of change to the everyday operations of facilities, everyday operations of fleet. So it's both on the training side and also the capacity side.
Counsel.
Thank you through, Mr. Mayor. So something that we have spoken of is our town buildings, energy use. For example, this building has a problem being very warm on the third floor and you know, it's just, it's not a consistent level through all the towns, all the three floors and over at the leisure complex. Staff use space heaters in the summer. So is there a plan to look at our our town building? I know we're going to look at the SARC. Actually, I don't think anybody caught it. The SARC uses a tremendous amount of energy. Do you have the statistic in front of you?
Starby.
There. I think the number is close to fifty percent of the
Forty?
Thirty percent of the total carbon of the entire town is the SARC, which is I think greater than fifty percent of the building component. So the SARC is one building which will have the detailed feasibility study completed on it to understand a pathway to decarbonize the SARC in particular because that is such a major component. And then to your first question with respect to kind of comfort in spaces, the great opportunity doing some of these retrofits presents is there's opportunity to improve overall comfort comfort because the kind of building automation strategies and how systems are controlled will be looked at in detail as part of each of the retrofits.
Thank you. And my comment to you at the committee meeting and now at council is we're, this is very dependent on electricity. And we've seen examples where the electricity grid is is not always reliable. So will you be working on, will we be working on alternative energy forms and hopefully some backup energy should the electricity grid go down?
Starby.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Certainly local renewable energy is an opportunity area that we discussed with the stakeholders. It's the IESO vessel on the grid and there's lots going on with them looking at decarbonizing the grid. The grid in Ontario is relatively clean, which is why a lot of plans are to electrify buildings and electrify fleet. So it's it's an important consideration to be evaluating in detail, whether it's solar onsite, on roofs, ground mounted, parking lots, geothermal. There's all sorts of technologies which will be looked at in particular as part of the feasibility studies to support resiliency and redundancy of the buildings as well from an electricity standpoint.
Counsel.
Thank you. I think that's very important. Appreciate that. And I'd like to thank Natalie Keel, our energy and climate change analyst for working closely with a consultant on this.
I'm to work with Nancy and Natalie on this.
Nancy was, of course. Excuse me, Nancy Fleming also. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Kim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for presenting. When I look at the utility cost reductions and savings listed in the report, I'm encouraged but also weary because I remember back in twenty sixteen or so where we did the LED initiative. And we saw the savings there that didn't really materialize. It always has my head scratching when I look at these. So through you, Mr. Mayor. When I see that there's a utility cost saving of a thousand seven fifteen dollars per year for control ventilation and fourteen thousand three seventy six for LED and a list of other things, is there any way that we could solidify that after each year and say that yes, we did? Is that something that we can see each and every year?
Starby.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. It's a great question. It's utility costs. Structure and framework is complicated in nature. So we've ensured in the report that we've stated all our assumptions so that kind of tweaks and adjustments can be made. Like, for example, the carbon tax is an area where a lot of people are doing sensitivity analysis around it. What happens if it disappears? What happens if it increases to three hundred tons, three hundred dollars per ton? To measure and verify is an important part of what we've identified as part of the plan to ensure that the checks and balances are there to align the overall. uh, to align the overall performance with what the expected outcome of the retrofits are. Uh, and then there's opportunities to create different strategies at different facilities from a utility framework standpoint. So larger facilities, yeah, there's more options uh, on different, different utility rate structures that you can opt in or out, out of. Uh, so overall, it's, it's quite complicated. We've stated our assumptions with respect to utility rates and it's, it, it will be dynamic um, over the next twenty five years uh, towards the twenty fifty goals.
Counselor.
Thank you. And you're right. I mean, everything's based on assumptions. It's, it's uh, you know, it's, it's, it's an art versus a science, but you know, if there's any way that our finance team can, you know, based on the assumptions, you know, come out with some kind of annual uh, report, something simple, uh, that will s- state that, you know, we did have some savings that, you know, that our costs are going in this, in the right direction. Um, yeah. That'd be great so that it can support uh, this wonderful report. Thank you.
Counselor.
Thank you. Thank you for the uh, report. Very informative. I'm still actually going through it. It's very lengthy. Um, I was really interested in understanding kind of the, from when we started looking at these things in any detail between twenty eighteen and twenty twenty two, um, the matrix in table seven. Um, just to Counselor Gardner, the SARC used eight point four million kilowatt hours in twenty eighteen and seven point seven in twenty twenty two. Uh, that's eighty one kilowatt hours per square foot versus twenty twenty two seventy five uh, kilowatt hours per square foot. Um, a significant user of energy. Uh, I was interested in, in understanding the Joint Operations Center, says administrative offices. Um, but it also uses significant energy. And I'm wondering whether it's not just the administrative part. It's also everything in the back. Is that the case? Have we captured everything in, in that category? Because if we compare to this space here, uh, you know, thirty three uh, kilowatt hours per square foot versus this space here is around twenty six. And it's gone down in, in twenty twenty two. So are we capturing everything else in the J O C? We built it to lead standard. So I suspect it must be very efficient. Through you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Darby.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so the data, we had data for all facilities and all usages at each of the facilities. Um, so it does capture uh, everything. Like the, the whole measurement of, of the property. Um, in terms of how facilities operate on a kind of unit of energy per square footage basis. It's, it's quite complicated. Like we do a lot of benchmarking uh, with comparable buildings uh, throughout Ontario to really understand where each building type should be. Uh, but it's very dependent on when it was built, who's controlling the systems in the building, what their energy sources are. So uh, many of the buildings were kind of in that medium or mid-range in terms of kind of perfor- performance per square foot. Um, but each of them have a significant contribution that needs to be addressed.
Counselor, the reason I ask is, is, you know, I don't know how many more buildings we're going to be building, but we, we went above and beyond and build it to lead standards. So is there an ability to kind of carve out just the administrative offices to, to understand and, and compare to our other buildings? You know, how well is it doing? Uh, considering the fact that we spent all that extra money um, during the capital project to build it to a higher standard, we would expect the results also on an energy level to, to be um, much better.
Mr. Darby.
There's certainly that opportunity. Uh, it does depend on the data that's available right now from wow, the utility perspective. On if there is kind of decoupling and, and internal metering and monitoring uh, to complete that analysis quite quickly. If, if it's kind of one meter for the whole site. Uh, you know, we can, we can look in detail to understand each of the systems and model that out. So you have that separation. Um, and, and the commentary on, on lead um, is a great kind of contributor to the green building standard that's recommended, where a clear direction for major renovations and new construction is established, like, like net zero for each and every building as for new construction would be an example of that. Um, lead is, uh, has all the checklist. So the energy performance, you get points for the energy performance, but it's kind of one component of an overall checklist. So uh, the fact that its lead uh, probably suggests that it's well performing, but doesn't necessarily mean it's the best performing.
Counselor.
Okay. We were told from staff to, to, to fund it. Those were kind of not the arguments, but uh, that's okay. That's okay. Um, just two others on that same table. Um, the Aurora Family Leisure Complex between twenty twenty, twenty eighteen and twenty twenty two uh, reduced significantly by half, in fact. Um, its energy consumption per kilowatt hour, uh, as well as um, the Aurora Community Center, almost by half in those, what are it, four years. Um, is there, did we do something in order to accomplish that?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, um, I, I just don't recall off the top of my head. Uh, I know there, there, there's a lot uh, that the town did. Um, certainly twenty twenty and twenty twenty one were kind of throwout years from a data perspective. So there is, in general, there's a lot of change of how we operated our facilities in those two years, which contributed to um, kind of full normal operation in twenty twenty two. Um, but it'd be something that uh, we could just double check from a data perspective on what happened in those years with those particular facilities.
Counselor.
The, the reason I, I ask that is because you also have a chart with recommendations of, of the various facilities and what you recommend to upgrade um, in order to make them more efficient. I was quite shocked to see the J O C on the list with some significant, almost six million dollars in spending. Um, a relatively new building, yet you, you're suggesting domestic hot water to heat pump HVACs. A bunch of other things that, that you would think are virtually brand new. Um, a thirty five million dollar building. Um, how is it that we have some six million dollars that you're suggesting in order to make it even more efficient when it's, you know, six, seven years old?
Mr. Darby.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, great question. Uh, it's a situation that we're encountering fairly regularly. Um, the industry standard over the past number of years is that heating for space heating and domestic hot water is typically through natural gas. Natural gas is the largest contributor to carbon emissions for each of the buildings. And then overall, the largest contributor to carbon emissions for the town. So um, certainly we recognize that it's a, you know, fairly new facility and, and designed uh, fairly recently. But there's still significant systems consuming natural gas and those primary measures are to uh, electrify or decarbonize those systems, um, which is why there's uh, there's a, a big investment required.
Counselor.
I, I'm hopeful that the um, Town Square Project, um, we won't in two or three years be going through this and saying, you know, we should have. Um, I don't know whether we've, you know, we're in the middle of it. Well, we're near the end of it, um, but I hope we've uh, some forethought in terms of how we built that building, the new building. Um, in terms of energy consumption, I don't know whether you know or not, but just throwing that out there.
Thank you, Counselor. We second that.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, just something you said that I thought interesting before you were talking about how clean the grid is. Um, and you're actually talking about capacity of electrification. And we've got uh, out of this four million dollar budget that I grant that there are going to be grants involved in it, but almost three million of it is directed towards electrification. And what do you say to the people? And there are those people around who believe that electrification is not the direction to go. We don't have the capacity to deliver the electricity that we need because I know the question is going to come up. And I'd like to hear something from an expert who's uh, works in this all the time. So if you wouldn't mind indulging me, I'd appreciate it. Through you, Mayor.
Mr. Darby.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, it's a great question and a conversation that we're having regularly. Um, I certainly don't work for the I E S O. So the I E S O manages our grid in Ontario. Um, they're looking at multiple scenarios from the reports that they've released. They did look at, you know, what a scenario would look like to fully electrify, sorry, decarbonize the grid in Ontario and a scenario where, you know, all buildings and all um, vehicles become electric. And I think it's something like doubling the total grid capacity uh, will be required. And they've got a scenario where it has a significant increase in nuclear capacity and other renewable uh, or, or carbon neutral energy sources like hydroelectric and more solar, more wind, uh, et cetera. Um, they also um, are, are looking at in the short term, having more natural gas um, uh, generation sources for peaks online because there's some decommissioning of nuclear power plants. And there's more discussion on, on, on refurbishing those instead of uh, be refurbishing them because they are uh, carbon neutral. So there's a lot of discussion and is, which, which is why we perform some sensitive, sensitivity analysis on it. So in Ontario, it's around thirty to forty grams per kilowatt hour. Um, so we're looking at, you know, double that, but also towards zero. Um, and what the key thing here is to not kind of invest too early in carbon offsets. So the general strategy is to do your best at each of the buildings as possible to lower your carbon footprint, uh, then have kind of uh, electric based systems, which are flexible to some of the renewable energy um, local projects that there could be integration with. And then consider things like carbon offsets later to kind of bridge the final gap. So there's flexibility in the plan and program we put in place to for uh, for Aurora to um, keep things local for as long as possible and then kind of continually review what's happening from a grid perspective.
Great. Counselor. Thanks. Great answer. I appreciate the work that you're doing to uh, make us as uh, energy efficient and carbon neutral as we can. Thanks.
Counselor Thompson, second time.
Thank you. Um, one of the things it notes in the report is that the Central York Fire was excluded from this process and the buildings there. Uh, can you explain why we chose not to include the fire station?
Mr. Darby.
Uh, through you. Um, is it ownership, structure?
Um, we own it.
Or I, I forget off the top of my head, but maybe if Natalie can jump in and answer the question. I know we, we probably made that decision like a year ago, so.
Mr. Mayor, um, for those locations, um, we don't have access to the utility billing. So um, usually for carbon management, who has the utility invoices and who pays for them is usually the one who then takes on those um, emissions in to their inventory. So we're just following carbon management best practices um, for those locations. So uh, Town of Newmarket, I know uh, pays for the in uh, utility at the new location. Um, and there's my understanding a change of potential structure of managing some of those facilities, especially when it comes to utility, um, paying for the utilities.
Counselor.
Um, are we aware if Newmarket is going through a similar process with regards to um, energy conservation and whether or not they are choosing to include C Y F plus?
No.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, they are also needing to uh, put together their E C D M um, plant, their uh, energy conservation, the man, the man, management plans as well. Um, and if they're following the O R E G um, requirements and the procedures, uh, they would be including those uh, facilities within their inventory.
Thank you. I just think that if we're setting targets and goals to, to be able to achieve them, uh, Central York Fire needs to be included somewhere, either with us or with Town of Newmarket. I mean, ultimately, uh, four or five of the station we just built, we own it. It is our asset. I'm sure that we could collaborate with them with respect to utility and just capturing those data points because one of the, the value of this report is, is identifying the trend year over year. And so you've said in twenty eighteen, this is the usage in all the various facilities. Here we are twenty uh, twenty two and, and, and on and on and go. So I just think that um, you know, those kind of benchmarks are important to establish. And so we should ensure that it is being captured uh, for future knowledge as well. Uh, but at the same time, it just doesn't make sense to exclude certain facilities uh, if we're striving for these goals and targets.
Counselor Gardner, second time.
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. And with respect to nuclear energy, uh, I think it's about fifty percent of our energy comes from nuclear in Ontario, which is hugely surprising and concerning to me. Do you know uh, of those facilities, uh, which would be, how many would be or how much would be ending uh, getting near end of life? And if that will be a prob, do you think that will be a problem? Or maybe that's beyond your, beyond the scope of this, but um, um, it's common. If we're so dependent on electricity. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Call the vote. All those in favor, owes that carries. Thank you very much. Eleven point one, counsel. This is the twenty twenty three year end investment report and annual policy review. Counselor Kim, you pulled this. Did you want to move the recommendation? Thank you. Second, there, Counselor Thompson. Counselor Kim, you pulled it. You want to speak to it?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just want to thank our director, Rachel Wayne Wright Van Kessel, the finance team to for uh, for helping us and stewarding, you know, this journey. Uh, I know we've come a long way since twenty fifteen, you know, when I first inquired uh, with the town treasurer, previous treasurer in terms of how our reserves were invested. Um, you know, this is a great, it's great that council has the opportunity once a year to review the investments and the investment policy statement to ensure that it's still relevant based on the town's current investment objectives and risk profile. Um, key force performance is certainly welcome. Um, you know, I don't want to spend an exorbitant amount of time on the report, but I'll quickly share, you know, my comments, feedback and recommendations for the I P S, uh, because that's what's been asked. Um, I had uh, five comments or recommendations. And number one is just a need for a performance objective. If, you know, if one were to have a financial planner or advisor, the question that'll be commonly asked of the client is, how much will we, will we be needing in, you know, six months, two years, five years? Uh, and related to this would be, you know, what rate of return would one be looking for based on the amount of risk you'd like to take? And, you know, I've created some I P Ss during my career and, and read many others. And one of the, the things that we include in I P S is um, our target performance. And I think, you know, based on our moderate to, you know, low to moderate risk profile, I don't think it's, it's unheard of to ask uh, invest one for uh, target performance of inflation plus, you know, three percent or something of that nature. I mean, given that, you, you know, we're eighty percent, eighty five percent filled with bonds and they're directly correlated with inflation. I think adding an extra three percent or whatever is, is wise. Uh, it'd be nice to, to see if we can uh, include that in the I P S. Uh, two, you know, consider removing leverage. I noticed that in the document, it, it says that uh, they may or may not use leverage. They haven't used leverage to date, but they have the flexibility of doing so. Um, you know, given that eighty percent of the portfolio is fixed income, I'm not sure what kind of leverage you're going to use on, on bond funds, although you, you can do that. Um, but, you know, if we have a low to moderate risk profile, I, I don't see the uh, the need. need for leverage. So I'd either ask them what that means and or why they would even include that if if they may not even consider using it. Three. Yeah, I was I was a little bit surprised that in the portfolio, it includes PPNs, municipal protected notes usually have a lot of fees. I know because I've created them and have done a lot of due diligence on them. Now fees will include, you know, commission, trailer fees to those who sell it, operational fees and structuring. And I don't know whether that's all included in the end fee percentage, but I mean, PPNs are, in this day and age, is same as fixed income. And given that we have a boatload of fixed income, I'm not sure why we need to diversify into a different type of fixed income vehicle. Fourth, there's forty-three million or forty-six percent of the prudent investment portfolios and equities. All the other fifty-four percent is in bonds and a HISA, high interest savings account. And that's a short term vehicle. So I'm not sure why, you know, we're paying professional manager to put, you know, a good chunk of our portfolio into a high interest savings account, which you can do going into a bank. And so paying someone to do that is kind of befuddling to me, but if we're going to pay someone, I'd rather have, you know, majority of that into a an equity fund. And the last recommendation is in the investment report, there is an overall portfolio performance net of fees. I like that broken down by funds. I mean, this is essentially a fund of fund product. So if we can have the performance of the individual funds, there's only five or six of them, I think that'll, you know, give us a lot more insight into, you know, attribution and being able to question Invest One in terms of their performance. So I think, so I just wanted to share those five and I'll be happy to email, you know, those comments as well.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Thompson.
Thank you. Through you, Mrs. Wayne Wright Van Kessel. Rachel, within the report, you identify our yield and put it in comparison to the market rates. But I also noted that in the region report, the region was also talking about their high returns for last year. Do you have a sense or, you know, or is it something that you can provide just in terms of a comparator, how Town of Aurora did versus the region from a yield perspective?
Swearing, I think, Castle.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So I'd have to look into the details on the region. The region is not a prudent investor, so they are limited to the legal list. But they do their own trading, so they do have dedicated trading team for their investments.
Counselor.
Yeah, I think it just provides a little bit of context in terms of market in addition to the government Canada information you provided. So thank you.
Counsel Reese.
Yeah, thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. The my question had to do this with my own interest on, you have something in there called interest allocation. Can you explain how the interest allocations are being applied to the reserves?
Castle.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So the way we do our interest allocation is we look at the overall returns that we recognize in the year. So we recognize our returns upon maturity or upon sale of an equity. So not during, based on market throughout the year. When we take that return, we look at it as a percentage of an overall return. So that percentage is what's earned essentially by DC reserves and the non-tax funded reserves. The remainder, the allocation of that percentage that relates to any tax funded reserves is then discounted by the amount that is pulled into the operating budget on an annual basis of one point six million. So they actually get a lower percentage. And then what that does is it makes sure that each reserve equitably essentially receives the same amount because we can't discount that one point six tax funding against water or development charges. And then if we have any interfund borrowing, we do some charges against the reserves between them. So within development charges, we have some of the negative balance, some of the positive balance. So what happens is the ones with a negative balance get charged interest by the ones with positive balances. So it's it's a bit tricky, but that's in essence of what happens.
Okay, that's good. That explains it. And the other question I have is something that looks for the future. And, you know, if we have dwindling reserves and we have, I can't recall what the number is that we have in all of our reserves that you're using to create a revenue stream. Have you done any calculations? Because you've said before that we're having, you may have difficulty in achieving our capital plan for ten years because of dwindling reserves. Have you done any evaluation on what that, the effect of that will be on this portfolio, on the potential loss of revenue because of our lack of capital?
Swearing, I think, Castle.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So a substantial chunk, what is sitting in our reserves and our longer term investments relates to asset management for water and wastewater network. Most of the asset management requirements for those types of projects will be occurring in and around the 2050s in that time. So that's why they're invested in such a longer term, hopefully earning enough so that we can pay for these projects when they do come along. But we have the time with prudent industry to be able to adapt and take the money out as we need it, but then we'll gain, be building up reserves. Part of some things that are coming up next month includes the asset management plan and looking at how we plan for asset management overall. So we still need to make sure we maintain healthy reserve balances at the end of the day, which includes capital prioritization, investing in asset management. And when it comes to these long term items such as water and wastewater, make sure we invest it appropriately so we can pay for those projects in the future.
Great, thank you. That's all.
Any other comments, questions? All the vote, all those in favor. Oh, so that carries, counsel, ten minute help break. Okay. Counsel. We are back. We'll go to thirteen point one. This one is the Town Park Accessible Playground Update and Funding Increase. Would someone like to move the recommendation? Counsel Reese, their seconder. Counsel Gallo, thank you. And Counsel Gardner, you pulled this one. Did you want to speak to it? Okay, any any comments or questions? Counsel Reese.
Yeah, my question really has to do with the delegates' response in the the costs that are incurred for the increased accessibility that was suggested. Has that been included in this report? Or would those things be additional on top of this report? Can you help me with that through you, Mayor?
Ms. Teencamp.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The majority of the things have been included in this cost. Ms. Hughes spoke about a fully accessible swing component. We just read, just had a conversation this afternoon about where it could be placed and got confirmation from our playground consultant that we could change out one of the amenities that was originally proposed and this could go in lieu of it. So there is an additional cost for that uplift between the two different pieces of equipment. And that would be approximately thirty-three thousand.
Right. So you're just saying there's a thirty-three thousand addition onto this if we were to include everything that delegate included in her delegation.
Ms. Teencamp.
That's correct.
Counselor.
Okay, thank you. The other questions I have, just give me a minute here. I want to thank the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee for the time that they spent on this because this was important. And also, again, I thank Ms. Teencamp for the work that she's done. And I'm, I hope that what we're going to do is to have these community information meetings all the time. Because through the work that has been done with the Rate Payers Association, it's been very useful and we're going to end up with a really nice park. So I want to thank the staff for all of that, but the other thing that came to light when we were working with this, you've got a grant application in here. Have you talked about the likelihood of that sixty? The likelihood of that sixty thousand dollar grant application? I know grants are. It's a crap shoot, you roll the dice and you hope you're going to get it, but do you have some sense that the sixty thousand is likely to come? Through the grant application through you, Mayor?
Miss Teen Camp.
And through you, Mr. Mayor. All indications are we most probably will get the grant, but as you said. We're not sure completely.
Well, through our consultations with the Town Park Area Rate Pairs Association and their, their playground group. We uncovered some sponsorship dollars. So I really would hope that there's not going to be any. Hesitation in trying to meet the needs of what we need for that town park area playground. So. If that should come up, I would hope that you would come back to us and talk to us about whether sponsorship money. Is available and how much is available? And the other thing that's very important for us in that area of town. Is that within two years, we're going to have a significant population increase through Bersey Street, which is going to create a tremendous load on that. And I just want to make sure that we have the capacity. For the additional residents that are going to be there. And so if there's a need to spend a little bit more on that park to make sure it's the feature that we need because. The town park area is becoming a. A hub of activity with music in the park, dance in the park. With all the new residents that are going in there. So I really want to make sure that this, this goes through and it goes through well and that it's a what. What Allison said was the, it's a jewel. So. It hope it becomes a standard. So I want to thank you for the work you've done on it.
You, Counsel Gallo.
Thank you. So part of my question is answered in terms of what the delegate was looking for. I suspect either. Tonight to add. You would need us to add the thirty three thousand or a council. Thirty three seems pretty specific, but if that's what it is. The other thing, just for clarity, the Queen's Diamond Jubilee is considered an accessible. Playground, is it not?
Okay. Miss Teen Camp? Yep, I see her nodding yes.
Okay, I just wanted to. Think the delegate said that we don't have any, and I seem to remember. Spending a lot of money and effort into. Producing that and it's well used. I live there, obviously I see it and it's, it's very well used. Was it?
Thank you, Counsel Gardner.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. There were a couple of questions from the advisory committee committees. One was about signage. So to describe how an explanation of it, thank you, of accessibility components. The other one from Parks and Rec was about permeability of the surface. They were satisfied with your answer, but it, or the answer, but they, it doesn't say what it is.
Teen Camp.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So the rubberized surface is permeable. So it is, yes. It's basically made up of a number of small particles of rubber then that are melted together and they do allow for permeability.
Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I sent Mr. Downey many years ago, a picture of a wonderful playground in North York where. There were actual stations for people in wheelchairs. They wanted to do various exercises. And. It was just attached to the structure. So it wasn't anything expensive or extra. Are you familiar with anything like that?
Miss Teen Camp.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The project that we're endeavoring to complete this year, Summer Park actually has a fitness. Park included with it and those structures do have signage that allows you to use them for. If you have a disability in various different forms.
Counselor.
Thank you through Mr. Mayor. I'm very, very happy to hear that.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, call the vote. All those in favor. Those that carries. Fourteen point two. This is the results consultation with owners regarding the heritage designation. Would someone like to move the recommendation? Counsel Gallo, thank you, secondar. Counsel Reese, thank you. Any comments or questions on this? Counsel Reese.
Yeah, I have a few. Eight out of thirty doesn't seem like a very good number in it. And I really wonder about the other twenty two and. The rationale that we're using to. Remove these from being designated when at one point they were worthy to be designated and I just worry about the. Dilution of our heritage buildings in the community if the. Only thing that happens is someone says, I don't want it. And so through you to perhaps Mr. Ramuno or Mr. Rob or someone else, I'd like to have a little bit of an understanding of. I know we go out, I know we inform people about this and they have an opportunity to object or include themselves, but it. It seems to be a, a decision that someone makes. Regarding economics as opposed to. The value of the property and our need to maintain the heritage value of our community. So I'd like, if you could give me a little bit of a. A understanding of how this gets done and what our options are beyond that. To you, Mr. Rob, if you don't mind.
Rob.
Yes, for sure. Through you, Mr. Mayor. So that list of thirty, these are the responses from the owners. It's not a recommendation that they don't be designated because all thirty do merit and qualify for designation under the OREG nine oh six. First and foremost. Under Bill twenty three and the new parameters of the Ontario Heritage Act, there is objection rights. When we pursue a designation of a property and we issue a notice of intention to designate. So this work is proactive in that regard.
Counsel.
Great. So the. Outcome of these other twenty two right now are. If today we accept. These eight who have. Chosen to have theirs designated, are we de facto then choosing that the twenty two? Will not be listed as a heritage designated property in this community through you, Mayor?
Rob.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. At council's discretion, council can choose to issue notices of intention to designate for any of these thirty properties. This report simply states the responses received by these owners. It is entirely council's prerogative to pursue designation of the individual properties or not.
Counsel.
So then my question is, how would we do that?
Could make an amendment, counsel.
But this motion now.
Yes. We could, and Mr. Rob, correct me if I'm wrong, we as council can put forward to designate all thirty if we so choose, or we still see fit. What's in front of us, as Mr. Rob mentioned, is what came back from their initial reach out to the residents and. That's why there's only eight properties because those are the ones that have not objected.
So perhaps then I could ask through you to. Tricia about our legal position, then should we decide that we want to designate? All of those twenty two who said that they did not want to be designated, what are the legal consequences to the town if we choose to do that? Through you to whoever.
I'll get Mrs. Sario if she wants to say, but I mean, they would just file for an objection and, and then we would just go to the essentially the tribunal.
So this is a tribunal issue?
Yes. Mrs. Sario, you can, you can chime in if you'd like.
I'm, I'm happy to, I'm happy to get the answer from somebody and if that's the answer, that's the answer. I'm okay with it. I just wanted to know what the consequences are of this.
I see you're, you're saying that that's the answer then. Yes, there you go. That's the answer.
Like to hear others. That's it for right now.
Counsel Gardner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, Mr. Rob. We have in the appendix, we've got a list of all the properties. But it doesn't say how high their ratings were. Are there, are there any here that are very important to designate that are worth a fight over?
Rob.
Baseline criteria to satisfy designation under the OREG. If I had to highlight any particular property specifically of those twenty two. The Heritage Advisory Committee has highlighted nine Wellington Street East as a particularly significant heritage property associated with our downtown and our commercial core.
Counsel.
Thank you. I think I'd need to think about it, but. To counselor. With this point. You know, we need to. We mean to maintain our heritage. So I would like to look at, is, is it in a report from the Heritage Committee, the, the scoring of these properties?
Rob.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So this is an extension of the Heritage Register Review exercise that we also had completed a few years back.
Yeah.
As you'll all recall, we designated the prior, pre-determination for the priority properties, that first batch of thirty last year. This is another batch that has been screened by the Heritage Committee and staff. And there is individual property information evaluation sheets for these thirty that are presented at the previous report to this one last fall. They are available on that, on that previous report.
Counsel.
So when we did this last year, there was quite a backlash. I think we. We want, we meant to designate all of the properties that were part of that report. But there was quite a backlash from some and. Now we've gone in a different direction. I think we've done the consultation first. Is that correct? So I'm not sure where that leaves us if we decide to designate because. Mr. America, Mr.
Miss Rob.
Mr. Mayor, yes, I think there's still merit to this attachment in this exercise. Because what it has shown us is proactively, again, being the key word here, is that we're not issuing the notice of intention to designate cold, so to speak, and then getting objections received. And surprising the owners play frankly, which that was something that we heard from council and from the residents last year. That they were surprised by the sudden issuance of the notice of intention to designate. This, we've been proactive in our approach here. So we have the information before us. I can't speak for each individual owner, but it would be safe to assume that if we do choose to issue a notice of intention to designate for those twenty two, we could see objections come forward.
So follow up through Mr. Mayor. So when we. Notified the residents of the intention. Then is that, did we get feedback from all those properties saying they didn't want to designate, or did we ask them if they?
Rob.
So this prop, or this process so far has been purely consult, consultation based. There hasn't been the legal instrument of issuing the actual formal notice of intention to designate. We still control that process. This has been purely on a one to one basis as a pure consultation and preliminary engagement. A proactive approach.
Counselor.
And through Mr. Mayor to Mr. Sario. Mr. Sario, because the process is. Different from the last time. So we've, it's been, we've consulted with the residents. And they have already, some of them have already said. That they don't want to be designated. Does that put us in? A difficult position if we decide to designate?
Mr. Sario.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. No, it would not. We still, this was done outside of the Ontario Heritage Act process. We still have to follow the Ontario Heritage Act process. So even if we did designate, then they have an opportunity to formally put in objection. And then that's when it goes through the whole appeal process.
Counselor.
Thank you, thank you. So. Maybe, maybe that, so we have to do this process anyway. The, the, through the Ontario Heritage Act, we, we still have to go through the process that we went through last year.
Saria.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes.
Counselor.
Okay, so maybe in the, in, in the process, some of them will change their minds. But if there is a particular one that's important. I think we, we should fight for it. Thank you.
Counsel Gallo, first time. There you go.
Thank you. Through you to, to Mr. Rob. Even if we didn't, if we only chose the top, the eight that are there. That doesn't necessarily mean that we can't go back to the rest of them. And decide at a certain, at a later date, whether or not we want to. Move forward with them. And there are more on the list. We're just doing it chunk by chunk. I don't know how many more there are. But. You could. I don't remember what the, the drop deadline is. I think it's twenty fifteen January or something like that. Through you, Mr. Mayor, what is that date?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So that date through Bill twenty three is January first, twenty twenty five. I will notify council though as well. Just as recently as last week. Bill two hundred has been tabled at the provincial legislature and is at first reading right now. That looks to extend that date to twenty twenty seven, January first. That's not approved yet, but that's been taken.
Counsel.
Okay, so. I mean, I, I think we're following the right process. We're going through our list. We're first asking, you know, are you interested? If we get a positive response, we put her on the list, council makes a decision, those other ones are still there. And then we can revisit them. And, and regardless of whether they want it or not, we can still move forward with them, but at least we're following, in my view. Proper process, a better process than we did last, last time. At least we're engaging the public, we're having this public debate. And, and we can still revisit all the other ones. And I'm glad to hear that, that, that timeline is extended. We have more time to, to go through that list and thoroughly. Even if it takes some explaining to those residents, why we feel a particular property is, is really important to designate. So I'm happy with this list. I'm happy to keep all the other ones still on a, a list. Let's go through all of them, see how many we can get with, with residents that are. Positive and are, are on board to, to designate. And then once that process is done, we can reevaluate all the ones that, that are remaining and see where we go from there. So I'm in favor of this.
You, Counsel Reese, second time.
Yes, thanks. And I agree with the Counsel Gallo on this. Because there are certainly some. Properties in here that I don't think anybody. Would not think that their heritage properties, properties such as the Knowles. Property such as bacon basketware and these are. Historical buildings that we need to protect, I think we need to protect. I understand. Everybody's interest economically to get maximum value out of property they've owned for a long time. However, I mean, we have a responsibility to this community to protect heritage and there are certain, and some are. I know I've seen them that they're this way or that way, but I think there are some that definitely have to be done. And I was really buoyed. I took a chance to. Talk to everybody in my ward that was on this list and the ones that you see on here. Were saying, yeah, this is the right thing to do. I appreciate it. Then perhaps we need to have some better communication. To our residents about the value of heritage through official channels so that people understand the rationale for, for what we're trying to do. So. That's my only comments here. So thanks very much.
You. Any other comments or questions?
Saying none, Mr. Rob, I think once again with Bill two hundred, I think the province heard loud and clear from a lot of municipalities that because. With that tight timeline, there was a lot of issues. I mean, including us, we had a pretty extensive list. And to get through it and to be able to do it in a fashion that we're talking about where we go out and do public consultation and work with the residents and. And try to be proactive at it and make sure that we're protecting our heritage takes time. So I'm glad that the province listened and hopefully that, that bill does receive royal assent and we get that extended time. I'm sure all municipalities will be happy about that, including ours. So thank you for all the work.
Call the vote. All those in favor? Those that carries. Fourteen point three. Draft Affordable Housing Action Plan. Someone want to move the recommendation? Counsel Thompson, secondar. Counsel Gallo, thank you. Any comments, questions to this one? Counsel Reese.
Yeah, I've got quite a few of them, but I'm. Don't want to belabor this, but. The. This doesn't sound very aggressive when we're looking at out to twenty fifty one. I know that's. It takes time to do these things, but. With the twenty six action items that I've seen, I've got a number of them here. And I'm really hoping. That we can get some true action, actionable items out of this. So for instance, we have this. Action number seven, which is the affordable housing. In new developments and we have this where we're supposed to be. Asking for twenty five percent of, of all our developments that are supposed to be affordable. And we've had that. uh in our official plan for some time, but it just hasn't worked. So is the action plan that we're going to be seeing eventually going to have some specific action items that will direct council to um, screen these applications through the um, when they come into Mr. Ramuno and, and his group so that there's a, there's an understanding that in this town, we're interested in affordable housing and we're prepared to stand by the affordable housing requirements of twenty-five percent and every one of those developments. So hmm, it's more of a comment and it's a question, I suppose, because I find that this is a, is pretty um, non-specific in terms of the things that we're going to do. So for instance, I see in here that we have the as-of-rights for four units where the province has as-of-rights for three. Um, my, I have a problem with that because of our stable neighborhoods and particularly a lot of the older part of town. Um, but it does have the qualifier that provided that there's room and there's space. But I have seen where we've tried to put four units on a, on something and the Committee of Adjustment says, well, it's okay to have a half a meter setback. So are there going to be some specific rules placed in, in, in this for our actions so that we have direction from council to say, no, we do not want to accept this application because, because I think that's really key if we're going to be doing something that's actionable. Another example we have is the, you know, the parking reduction of the parking minimums. And I'm still not convinced that in certain areas such as the Bersey Street area, that minimum parking is going to be useful and beneficial, even though it's in a major transit area. It's also going to create or may create problems in the adjacent residential areas. Uh, because there's no parking and I hope that we're going to be looking at a parking strategy and a traffic spread strategy that goes along with this. Because it's not just about um, housing. Um, I see the street scape improvement plan, but I really don't know how the street cape, streetscape improvement plan is going to um, reduce the overall cost of development, which is what's in this report. So I'm, I'd like to have some details on what we're actually going to be approving in here. Um, um, our delegate here talked about accessibility. And it just occurred to me that there, and I went back through it, that there's really no accessibility provisions in our Affordable Housing Action Plan. I don't see the application of accessibility in there. I assume it's going to be in there, but I don't like to assume. So um, is, is accessibility and maybe through to Mr. Ramuno, is accessibility considered in the Affordable Housing Action Plan? Or is it just simply affordability, not accessibility?
Mr. Ramuno.
Um, through you, Mr. Mayor. So counsel, we specifically on accessibility, I mean, we have policies on our official plan that speak to uh, express accessibility with respect to housing. The, the Affordable Housing Action Plan is uh strictly, it comes from our official plan. So there's a requirement in our official plan. Now that it's been approved, uh, to follow up with the uh, housing, Affordable Housing Action Plan. And it will detail, you know, through the various objectives and action items, those various different mechanisms to try and implement some of those targets in our official plan that you've mentioned, right? To try and achieve some of the affordability targets of the twenty-five percent um, of, of new housing townwide or thirty-five percent within our transit station areas. We've also identified a number of different sort of uh, um, elements in here with respect to um, you know, as part of our zoning bylaw review that will report to council on kicking that off, we'll be looking at a number of things that will report back to council such as the appropriate parking rate for, you know, some of the areas in town. I mean, the province has now through their recent bill uh, eliminated, you know, minimum parking throughout our major transit station areas. But we've got a couple of report back on our zoning bylaw with respect to parking. Um, update our zoning bylaw with respect to the as permitted, three additional, three dwelling units per, per lot. And look at the possibility of, you know, four units. And we'll come back with parameters with respect to, you know, wh- what criteria we should impose if we are going to go down that road. There are a number of other things in here as well that, you know, financial incentives that we can impose, community improvement plan. You did mention these promenade streetscape plan. The one item that that's mentioned, because part of that capital project, there is a uh, a one, apart from the uh, streetscape improvements, there is a significant uh, portion of a, uh, the sewer at Young Street that needs to be uh improved and upgraded that will provide additional capacity for housing within that area, new developments within that area. So there are a number of, you know, action items. Uh, what we're really hoping for here, I mean, Adam's done a great job with respect to uh, putting together a draft. We're hoping council will direct us to go out, consult with the public, you know, we'll set up some workshops, consult with some of our stakeholder uh, groups, I mean, the region uh, specifically because there are, you know, a community housing provider. And then we'll, we'll report back on uh, uh, some, some of the recommendations and comments for council to provide additional input and hopefully get to a point where we can uh, have council endorse a, uh, you know, an action plan moving forward. But again, there are a lot of elements that we'll need to continue to work on uh, as a result of the action plan.
Yeah, thank you. And I, I'm, uh, through you, Mayor, I, I believe it's really important to get the um, our community involved because we have Aurora cares and about a hundred other people that have expertise in this whole area and are quite willing to help with that. So I also have to comment on number nineteen. Um, you know, the participation with the region on emergency and transitional housing, they already, we already did that. And uh, it's here as a recommendation and yet we rejected it already. And I'm hoping we're going to have some movement on that one, but I agree with wholeheartedly with number, with number nineteen. Um, and again, twenty-six is regular update. So I'm, I'm in favor of this. Um, it's not, it's not in a final form naturally, but I'm looking forward to seeing what the real action items are on the Affordable Housing Action Plans. Thanks very much.
You, Counselor Garner.
Thank you. Um, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Rob. Um, on page two, it says, uh, the development review process and on collaborating with local housing partners. Are the, are the local housing partners developers? Or, um, on page, um, two, sorry, didn't give you very much. Uh, two thirds of the way down under analysis. Additional action items focus on continuing to streamline the develop, develop review process and collaborating with local housing partners. Who are the local housing partners?
Mr. Mayor, so one tangible component of this action plan is streamlining our process, making it really expedited uh, in terms of getting approvals and getting developments built. And then in terms of local housing partners, I mean, we have community housing providers, we have Blue Door, we have Housing York Inc. Agencies that we can call, uh, you know, collaboratively work towards achieving our housing objectives together upon.
Counselor.
I, I don't know. I don't think those housing partners are doing anything in Aurora. And as Counselor, we said, we failed with the the emergency, not the emergency, the transitional shelter. So that's just a comment. Um, with respect to um, the incentives to developers, especially with respect to the DC charge. Um, I believe the DC charge was reduced quite a lot for affordable housing. Um, that may not stand. Um, but at the moment, we, the town would lose a lot of money on uh, this type of housing. So um, I don't know, just any comments on that?
Shrub.
Yeah, I mean, through you, Mr. Mayor, uh, that is listed in the financial consideration section of this report. But affordable housing is good planning at the end of the day. And uh, from a professional planning perspective, it is our duty to be providing a diverse range of housing opportunities. I can't speak to the financial uh specifics necessarily. Um, but uh, we could, you know, happily report back and further detail. I believe finance is also, uh, had a few reports back in that regard as well.
Thank you. And there may be an update on that as well. Um, with respect to the developers building more affordable housing near the major transit areas, which is, makes perfect sense, you know, because hopefully people will take public transit. Um, I asked the consultant, how are we going to persuade the developers to do that? Um, I, you know, ha- there's not going to be as much profit in affordable housing and possibly not in attainable housing. So um, I guess it's just a comment. How are we going to persuade the developers to be interested in that to fulfill what this report is asking for?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So this Affordable Housing Action Plan is intended to be read comprehensively. Each action item does build upon one another in the sense that, as Mr. Ramuno also suggested, we may have our comprehensive zoning bylaw review, but then we also look to inclusionary zone. We look to uh CIP or Community Planning Permisses. Or the case may be to start incentivizing development uh that is affordable and encouraging it throughout our MTSA.
Counselor.
And with, uh, could you just talk a bit more about the inclusionary zoning?
Shrub.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just going to pull it up uh, on the appropriate section here. Because it is a specific action item that uh,
Thank you. I, I didn't pay enough attention to it.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, it's action item number eight, specifically looking to implement inclusionary zoning for the MTSA area. What inclusionary zoning is all about, it's about requiring a certain percentage of units to be developed uh affordably. Right? And then making sure they remain affordable over a period of time. What this takes is, again, as Mr. Ramino said, there's a comprehensive zoning by the review, but there's also a hierarchy to this framework and what this action plan is, is looking to create. Because what we will have to do if we pursue this action item is to adopt an inclusionary zoning policy and so a specific inclusionary zoning bylaw. Right? So that is something that, again, it's a layered approach in terms of how we can achieve affordable housing throughout town, but then also specifically within our MTSA as a focus area for growth and development.
Counselor.
Uh, thank you. And I guess just going back to my notes, the affordability price threshold is six hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. So uh, again, the comment, I don't, I don't see developers being that excited about doing this kind of housing. Um, but I, I, I really hope we can because it's needed. Thank you.
Counselor Thompson.
Thank you. Yeah, through you to Adam. Adam, I, I'd just like to be able to understand better the graphic on page eight, which talks about the affordable price threshold. So it, it, I assume it's identifying that the average uh, price of a home in Aurora is one point four or five million dollars. Are we saying that our definition of affordable housing in Aurora is five hundred and nine thousand dollars?
Shrub.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, affordability is defined generally speaking as thirty percent of your gross, of the gross average income using the twenty twenty-one census data. So granted, that may be relative to today's uh annual income. But yes, thirty percent relatively calculates that five hundred and nine thousand dollars for a market rate of.
So if we were going to apply metrics to this, the, the success of our ability to get affordable housing in Aurora will be based on how many homes get built for less than five, or gets sold for less than five hundred thousand dollars?
Shrub. Affordable housing is more than just market ownership. It's also about rental. Uh, this action plan speaks to rental as well. And also, if you look at the housing continuum, specifically on the page prior, on page seven, it's about providing housing opportunities across that whole spectrum. Home ownership is actually only one tier of that housing continuum, and we're looking to provide housing in the preceding target of it.
Counselor.
So are we, because often we talk about it in, in broader terms, in terms of twenty-five percent of this application. Are we able to then identify along this housing continuum specific metrics or targets that we're going to try and achieve in actual real numbers? Or is it just going to be a broad spectrum and, and trying to keep percentages?
Shrub.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. That is something that, again, we can look to incorporate through this exercise. I think that's a valid approach. Again, recognizing that this document isn't a statutory, it's not a statutory document relative to the OP policies. Well, that's a fair comment that we can look to integrate for sure.
Counselor.
I just think that we all talk around this table in terms of, of the goal of trying to um, have more affordable or attainable housing in, in Aurora. And uh, um, if that is to in terms of homeownership, uh, induce developers to build for that price, uh, we're going to be hard pressed to find any success in that particular area. Certainly, there's other ones that you've identified that we can look to. Um, but I think uh, we have a work cut out ahead of us.
Counselor Reese, second time.
Yeah, thank you. And just carrying on what Counselor Thompson said, that I see here on action six, which is the development of a reserve fund. So of course, we don't know what that number is. Um, but I think that's uh, that's where we're headed is that we're going to have to provide funding in order for to get the housing built that we need and some creative ways to get it done. And then the last one that I had in here that I wanted to ask a question was having to do with uh, number twenty-five. And again, it's getting back to my colleague here in Communications. Um, I think one of the biggest problems that we have is the, what is considered to be a stigmatization of people who may not have the affordability, have the ability to do things. So I think it's a really important part that we do to relieve the stigma of all of it. We've seen it before here. It raises its ugly head. And I think it's important that we have a community that's bound together with a cause to improve the um, quality of life for all of our residents, including those people who aren't at the upper special ones of, of uh, income. So um, I leave that for our communications person to come up with an education and a communication awareness program to try to remove the stigma that seems to be available or seems to be uh here. So just a comment. Thank you.
Yep. Any other comments or questions? Counselor Gallow.
Thank you. Just the, the timeline, what, what kind of timing are we looking at um, in terms of public engagement and, and all of that?
Shrub.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So obviously, as mentioned, this is a draft. We do anticipate holding, you know, a public open house, engaging with our community partners, the region. On the accessibility note too, as well, we are uh, working with our accessibility advisor and our committees, reaching out to our accessibility committee and our other relevant committees as well. Uh, in terms of communication as well, we're preparing for a social media blast. We're preparing for our updates to engage over our website. And then hopefully uh, through a comprehensive engagement plan, recognizing the summer as well, but we do target hopefully coming back to the final report in the fall.
The fall.
Yep. Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, Mr. Rob. Oh, Counselor Garner, go ahead, second time.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, just snuck it in. Um, there's been a long history of federal involvement with affordable housing. And uh, one of the successes is the kind of co-op where I live in. Um, which I can tell you is rents for much less than uh, the housing that we've put here in this report. And that's because everybody in the co-op participates in keeping the costs low. So um, is there any point or attempt to lobby the federal government to? I mean, they've, they've made a lot of pronouncements, but is there any attempt to try and engage the, the government, the federal government in our needs in Aurora? Is it possible?
We've constantly advocated with uh, the federal minister as well as the federal government as a whole. Our MPs have been very active as well in conversations to see what we can do uh, to provide affordability. It's, and it's not just us, it's right across the country.
Right. That's true. Everybody will answer.
Everyone's working on this file, Counselor, from federal to provincial to municipal governments.
And if we would be successful, where would we put the kind of co-op that I live in?
It would all depend upon our public planning process and for us to approve anything that is appropriate within our official plans.
Well, it's a nice answer, Mr. Mayor, but where is the land is what I? Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Uh, Mr. Rob, thank you. Uh, and Mr. Runo, thank you. Um, uh, I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing uh, what comes back to us after.
Uh, Mr. Rob, thank you. Uh, and Mr. Runo, thank you. Um, uh, I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing what comes back to us after going out to the public. Um, you know, personally, I think that we, we got to start getting really creative when it comes to this stuff. Um, I think we, as we were doing at the region now, we need to start doing it here is looking at properties that possibly we own that we could repurpose or also look at land lease deals where you eliminate the land costs for the development, which would significantly reduce those financial burdens and, and be able to create uh, true affordability in, in rentals um, in our community. So I think those are some of the things that we need to look at. Um, and I just make a comment as far as number nineteen, it's unfortunate that the, uh, the, the property that came before us wasn't an appropriate property within, within our O P. That's why it was turned down. And that's why number nineteen specifically states to assist the region in identifying appropriate sites. So I'm looking forward to finding those appropriate sites.
Call a vote, all those in favor. Post that carries. Fourteen-four. George Street Parkland Acquisition X Steps. Someone want to move the recommendation? Counselor Thompson, seconder. Counselor Kim, any comments or questions? Counselor Gallow.
Thank you. Um, recommendation five speaks to, uh, that staff be directed to uh, proceed with the process to rezone the George Street property as outlined here. Um, do we have to go through a public planning process in order to do that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, that, that is, that would be my recommendation. Currently, the school site is zoned institutional, so uh, we're seeking direction from council to initiate that process of going out to the public to consider rezoning that frontage to a appropriate residential zone.
That's what number five is, is intending to do.
Yes.
Um, have we reached out to any of the residents in the, in the neighborhood? Are they aware of, of what is happening here?
Counselor, I'm not sure if formally from staff, I've talked to many, I know, uh, Counselor Gillan in her ward, she's talked to quite a few as well. And um, I would say that the majority of them are aware of this that's in front of us tonight.
Do we know what the, the feedback is? Are they?
I think they're all excited to see a park. How's that?
Are they excited to see home, homes there? Oh, yeah, that's the, that's the real question. I'm sure the park they love are the homes. Are, are, are they, the, I think it's fifty-foot lots. Are they? Are we recommending having them consistent with the other lot sizes on the street, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, and that's why we've identified sort of the, the existing R three zone standard there is a minimum fifty-foot frontage. So as part of, you know, if council directs us to go out, uh, we will take a look at, you know, the number of lots, right? If they're fifty, they could perhaps be a little larger, sixty foot. So, you know, the range of five to seven or eight lots is really the maximum uh, that we're looking at along that frontage. It's about a four hundred and twenty-foot frontage.
Counselor.
Along George Street. That's it. Thank you.
Counselor Reese.
Well, my question's kind of the opposite. Is, uh, is there an opportunity instead of making larger lots and less, you know, large homes to be able to put in that are, are different R threes or different zoning so that we could have different types of thing, uh, purpose-built rentals. Uh, we could have condominiums. Is there any other? I mean, when we bring this forward like this and we show seven lots and they look like a, they're a, a large lot, then that's going to get people's views. So this is not cast in stone in terms of what you have here. This is just a rendering that that area of the property could very well be developed. And it's our property to uh, zone the way we choose to zone. Could you expand on that a little bit?
Sure.
Certainly, through you, Mr. Mayor. So we, we basically identified um, the lot size that is consistent within that area, that area of George Street and in the surrounding area and the existing zoning being R three. Certainly, as part of the process moving forward, based on comments from the public and, and council, uh, perhaps it could be a, a preference for larger lot sizes, or as you mentioned, even smaller lot sizes and different build forms.
Counselor.
Thanks.
Counselor Gardner.
Um, it looks like from this report that we have decided on this plan. So we are going to be going out to a public planning meeting to get residents' feedback on this.
Mr. Ramon.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I mean, first and foremost, we need direction from council. So I just thought we'd, it'd be put into for a sort of a conceptual plan of what would be, uh, you know, possible here considering the existing uh, lotting fabric. So again, I'm in council's hands. We would, you know, if you direct us to go forward to initiate the process, um, you know, we can draft up, uh, the appropriate, um, a notice that, uh, keep, keeps it open. But I think here we need direction from council if we want to look at rezoning the frontage of George Street, of the George former school for additional residential, uh, lots and housing.
Counselor.
Uh, well, I'm not comfortable with that because I, I think the public is expecting that we go out to them and present different options and they give us their feedback as opposed to us deciding on changing the zoning as a council without public feedback. I, I think, uh, I think that wouldn't be wise. Uh, and uh, I, I, I feel, feel very strongly that a public planning meeting should be a public planning meeting to discuss with the public what they want to see in that area. Um, you know, we, at the end of the day, we can do what we want. And I think that probably a lot of the public will agree with that, especially when they understand the, uh, the idea of bringing in some money for that to offset that purchase. But uh, I certainly wouldn't be in favor of the rezoning uh, this evening or for the council meeting. Um, Mr. Mayor, I, I, I believe that, uh, at least one resident has been in touch with you about having the possibility of a reunion for George Street School before it gets torn down. Uh, would that be up to us? Would that be up to the school board? How would we, it sounds to me like it's going to be torn down tomorrow.
It's not going to be.
Well, but it, but it's going to be fast.
You'd still have to go out to tender and still have to come back. And then so uh, it's something that we can look at. And I, and I, I mentioned to that resident, it's something that we could definitely look at. I think it's a great idea to see if we could have possibly a reunion. I don't know from a legal standpoint, and I think that's, I haven't asked Mr. Serial if people could actually walk through the building. And that might be an issue. So I can see her look on her face. So uh, but that stuff, we can have a conversation and, and try to see how we can look at doing something like that.
Thank you, because there are a lot of kids who went through that school and some of them, a lot of them are still around the Aurora area. So it would be, I think, a very nice thing and perhaps the right thing to do. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Thompson.
Thank you. Uh, just quickly, I'm, I'm supportive of the motion in front of us. It was eleven million dollars to acquire the property and, and for myself. Um, I was, I liked the, the idea of severing off a piece to recoup some of those costs to purchase it. It's, uh, in my eyes, a reasonable, uh, solution. It still enables the community or the neighborhood to have a park, but at the same time, it comes at a reasonable cost.
Yep. Any other comments, questions? Call a vote, all those in favor. Post that carries. Okay, next we have Counselor Gillan's member motion. I believe we're going to defer this to council. Counselor Gallow, you want to defer that to council? On the twenty-fifth? I believe it's the twenty-fifth, right? It's the twenty-fifth, yeah. Second, thank you. Call a vote, all those in favor. Post that carries regional report. Someone want to move that receipt? Counselor Thompson, Counselor Kim, secondary. Any comments, questions on the regional report? Call a vote, all those in favor. Post that carries. New business. Counselor Kim. Counselor Gallow. Counselor Thompson. Counselor Gardner.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, we, we have a very strong fireworks bylaw and, um, the, uh, the town and fire put out a lot of communication in social media and in the paper about, uh, the right use of fireworks when it's permitted, where it's permitted. Um, we had in my ward, uh, a huge fireworks display um, on the road, so, so big in fact that it left staining on the road and, and had to be cleaned up. And the fireworks that were used were very expensive and they were very high-powered. And not at all in keeping with our fireworks bylaw. Um, I, I believe that bylaw spoke to the residents and, um, you know, educated them. But we do have in our bylaw, uh, opportunity for a six hundred dollar fine and for up to five thousand dollar fine uh, for, uh, you know, doing things that are not allowed in our, in our bylaw. Um, and also I think that, uh, a lot of, uh, home insurance would not cover any damage that was caused, uh, by inappropriate use of fireworks, which could be very concerning to surrounding residents. Uh, just through you, Mr. Mayor, just like to know if, um, Mr. Serial has any comments on this?
Sarah.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Like you said, we do have an extensive fireworks bylaw. Um, bylaw does do their best to increase patrol on Victoria Day, the day before, on Canada Day and the day before. They have worked hard with communications to come up with messaging. We do normally take a voluntary compliance approach first where, uh, our bylaw officers try to educate the residents. Um, however, having said that, we have been, um, in discussions, I have been in discussions with bylaw over the past few, since Victoria Day, um, to see if there is more we can do. And we're looking at all avenues of what we can do if there is anything more that we can do.
Counselor.
Thank you. And, um, when it's on, you may not be able to answer this, but when it, it was on, this was on a, a road, our public property. Um, it would have been that if they set the fireworks off on their own property, that would have been within the rules. But what, what would have happened if, um, the fireworks and they were very high, uh, it, they traveled very high. Um, landed on a residence roof and started a fire. Would there be any liability on the part of the town?
Serial.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. No, not on the part of the town. Just because we have a bylaw, just because we enforce certain things. Um, if the person doesn't do it, it doesn't put any liability on the town.
Oh, that's, that's good to know. So the liability would be on the person who set off the fireworks?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, that is correct.
Thank you. Um, I had a lot of complaints and, uh, I know that I've raised this before and, um, and I, at that time, the feeling on council was that basically people could do whatever they liked. Um, and perhaps within reason. But this was, the, I mean, the, the fire, the bylaw requires a water source to extinguish a fire and various other precautions that are just there to keep everybody safe. So, um, I think we need to try and enforce our bylaw. Thank you.
Counselor Reese, new business.
Uh, just one. Um, and I guess it's timely at the end of the school year. We've had a, uh, an incident that has occurred in one of the schools. I won't say which it was. Um, but it's really around this community safety zones. And, um, about six or eight months ago, I talked to our traffic analyst about, uh, trying to get community safety zones established in every one of our school areas. And I haven't seen anything yet back from them. And I'm just wondering where that report would be. Wasn't, didn't come out of a motion. It just came out of a, a question. And I think it was Mr. Bat said, yes, let me look into that. So through you, maybe to Mr. Ramona to see where that is because we're, it's really, as far as I'm concerned, a lot of it is a parent issue. We have to train the parents and, um, what has to happen at drop-off areas and the rest of it. But the community safety zone would be a good start, I think. And I'd, and I'd like to get a little bit of a report on, on where that is. So through you to Mr. Ramon.
Mr. Ramon.
Yeah, certainly. Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, we're planning on bringing that community safety zone report, uh, to council early fall, September, October.
Counselor.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I think it's important because it comes into the fall, then we're not likely going to have it implemented for another three or four months. And so if there's any way that we can move that forward, I don't know what kind of work is involved in, in doing that. But I really would like to see it before the fall. So it's implemented in the fall. And then we can start doing the, uh, parent and, and the other type of training that needs to go through parent councils and schools because that's really where the, where the solution is going to be. But we have to have the little bit of the stick behind it with the, uh, uh, community safety zone. So I'd like to encourage you to kind of bring it forward quicker than the fall, if possible. So.
Okay. Public Service Council.
That's it.
That's it. Counselor Gardner, Public Services. Oh. Counselor Thompson. That's good. You guys, sorry, you guys are gonna have to wait just a little bit. We got a few. Town is looking for indigenous artists or, or to culturalists and passionate volunteers to contribute to John Abel Park. Expressions of interest are open for three distinct features at our new park. One, wood pole carvings to be featured on the park pathway. Two, educational healing garden with indigenous consultation. Three, annual community garden plot program. And to learn more and submit your expressions, visit aurora.ca slash john abel park. June is Recreation in Parks Month. As we heard at council last week, this is a celebration of Ontario's spectacular parks and recreation services and the important role they play in individual community and environmental wellbeing. Enjoy special events, participate in free town drop-in activities, or simply download our J R P M calendar for ideas and how you can enjoy nature and play all month long. And for details, visit aurora.ca slash J R P M. Um, it's a community garage sale coming up June fifteenth, it's Saturday. And so come out, there'll be lots of new household items and decor. Uh, it'll be in the community center parking lot from nine AM to one PM. And for more information, you can visit aurora.ca slash garage sale on Saturday, June the fifteenth. Um, love to see everyone out Aurora Town Park for Aurora's Performing Arts Festival presented by Marquee Theatrical Productions in partnership with the town. So there'll be lots of young talent competing for the winning title, acting, singing, dancing, wide range of age categories. So, uh, I would encourage all of council to come out as well as our residents, uh, to the town park on that day and, uh, cheer on all the young performers. Uh, it's going to be great. And the competition starts at ten AM. And you can visit aurora.ca slash arts festival. June is also National Indigenous Peoples' Month, so you can join us at Aurora Town Park on Saturday, June twenty-second, from nine AM to one PM to celebrate and learn more about the cultural diversity of the First Nations, Inuit and Métis people. There will be indigenous storytelling and live musical performances by Dave Moet and Trio. And you can get more details at aurora.ca slash Indigenous People. June is also Pride Month. And on Friday, May thirty-first, we raise the pride flag at Town Hall and officially proclaimed Pride Month in our town. Town staff and members of council will be proudly walking in the York Pride Parade taking place on June fifteenth in the town of Newmarket. And also everyone, if you can join the town for the inaugural Aurora Pride Lual, a vibrant celebration of LGBTQ two S plus pride and community spirit. And it's taking place on Wednesday, June twenty-sixth at the Aurora Family Leisure Complex from five to eight thirty PM. This is in partnership with participaction and you can play and York Pride, these event, these event invites individuals of all ages and families to come together for an unforgettable evening filled with joy, support and unity. And for more details, you can visit aurora.ca slash sport workshops. And it's time to have some fun because guess what? June thirtieth, Canada's birthday. We'll start early with an evening and a dance in the park. And then on July first, obviously, start your day off with our annual Canada Day parade down Young Street and then head over to Lambert Wilson Park for festivities including live music all day long, a live multicultural showcase and children's activities, including mini golf, inflatables and so much more. And we'll cap it off, uh, sorry, uh, Counselor Gardner, with fireworks beginning at ten PM. For more details, visit aurora.ca slash Canada Day. And last but not least, um, it'd be great to get the family to get out together this summer and join Psycho Aurora from July first. it'd be great to get the family to get out together this summer and join Psycho Aurora from July 1st to September 1st for weekly bike challenges. Everyone can get out, explore a beautiful town on two wheels and have a chance to win great prizes and gift cards. And anyone can register at aurora.ca/psychoaurora. Counsel Reese.
Yeah, thank you. You brought up a point about the indigenous wood carving. And I had the, some people from the senior center. Of course, they're very avid wood carvers and they wanted to do a, a poll or something. And is this only open to indigenous artists or it's for all residents in the community? Can somebody help me with that?
Steve Camp.
Specifically, we, we are looking for indigenous for this area because it's in keeping with the theme of the park and having an indigenous component. And that has been through consultation with our indigenous partners. But certainly, if you want to have them reach out to me, there are, might be some other opportunities in the arboretum and things for them to do some carving.
Counsel.
Super. I've asked them to reach out. So if they have not done so, then that's on them. But I'll remind them again. So thanks very much.
Counsel Gardner. Listen to that.
Um, I was just going to say I'm, I'm not opposed to fireworks.
I know, I was just teasing. All right. I was just teasing.
Okay, I'll just stop.
Okay. All right. Motion to adjourn. Counsel Kim, Counsel Reese, all those in favor. Pose. That carries, we are adjourned.